I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seeing that we have no one here that wants to speak on, to counsel about any item, I'm joking. I think there is actually a sign up list somewhere that is right here. A few comments in advance of public comments. First, I think there were some misconceptions out on social media. The Midland Avenue, South Midland Project is not an agenda item on this evening's agenda. We had a short work session earlier, right before we broke for, to grab dinner, before the council meeting. And that work session was intended to compile a list of questions that council needs answers to in order for us to make an informed decision about South Midland Avenue. If you, also, I understand there are a lot of people here to discuss South Canyon. South Canyon is also not on this evening's agenda. There are not decisions, decisions by council are not going to be made on either of those items right now with respect to South Midland. For everyone's benefit, the project is slated to begin construction in the spring of 2019, so that's a year from now.
Which project?
South Midland.
Okay.
And we will be bringing, once we have answers to those questions, we will have a very lengthy work session on, we anticipate April 19th, at our council meeting on April 19th. The public is more than welcome to attend that work session. Following that work session, whether it would be on the evening agenda that evening, or at a subsequent council meeting, there would then be a council meeting to discuss exactly how we're going to move forward on, on South Midland. I also want to clear up one other misconception about, about South Midland. We're still getting a lot of emails indicating people think that there is a proposal by council to do a partial reconstruction. There is no proposal, that's a misconception. There is no proposal by council to do that. All the proposals are to completely reconstruct Midland Avenue with a new road. The only question is, what is in that new road? It's just like saying, "We're going to buy a new car." Does that new car have heated leather seats and a television screen in the backseat for the kids, or not? Those are the kinds of questions we're going to be asking ourselves, but it will be a new car, or in this case, a new road. So, with that, I'm going to open it up for anyone who wants to address council on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. We do have a sign up list. I'll go to people who aren't on the sign up list after, after I go through this list. So Renee McCullough. And, oh, let me, let me also reiterate, please, please address all your comments to myself and the council. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And please do not be repetitive. We, we have a lot of items on our agenda, we want to get through them before midnight tonight. And so to be respectful of everyone's time, if someone else has said what you want to say, or you agree with, just, you can stand up, say, "I agree with what Mr. Smith said," or, or whomever. So, all right, go ahead.
And we have a new time rule.
Yes, or, go ahead and...
Yeah, I, the other thing, for the council's benefit, you're gonna have to talk loud, because my understanding is the mics aren't working either, like, everything in the council chambers died, which makes me nervous, because I, I came into the city about the same time as the building.
All right, and please, please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, City Council, neighbors, friends, and people of Glenwood Springs. My name is Renee McCullough. I live in Glenwood Park on Mount Soper Strive, 1,000, Mount Soper Strive, number one. As a 30-year resident of Glenwood Springs, with 29 years living in South Glenwood Springs, I'm coming before you to share my concerns about what is needed to upgrade and fix South Midland Avenue. First of all, since I have lived here, South Midland Avenue has never been attended to properly. The north part of Midland Avenue has been upgraded several times, and rightly so, because it is a major connection to the bypass. However, since Soper's Elementary School was built in Glenwood Park more than 20 years ago, nothing has been done to upgrade South Midland Avenue. It is the major thoroughfare to Hager Lane, Park West, Glenwood Park, Park East, Cardiff Glen, Airport Road, Three Mile, Four Mile, and also Sunlight Mountain Resort, a major tourist attraction that brings in an incredible revenue to the whole community. Here are my requirements that the people of South Glenwood desperately need. Number one, reconstruct the entire road. The potholes form because the drainage is not correct. Therefore, if it is not done correctly with a new drainage flow, the potholes will just come back. And the new road will be in the same condition a couple of years later, if a new layer is just put on without fixing the drainage. Number two, fix the water main under the road. If this is not fixed, then a few years later, more money will have to be spent redoing the road again. And is that what all of Glenwood Springs wants, is more money poured down the drain? I don't think so. Correct the driveway, number three.
Do you have one minute?
Correct the driveways and roads that intersect, so the turns are at safe angles. Add a sidewalk, it's not a luxury item. Atkinson Trail is a nice recreational trail, but it is not a sidewalk where people can walk, and children from Hager Lane could attend to Soper's Elementary, which is supposed to be a neighborhood school. Five, a roundabout at the intersection of Four Mile Road and Airport Road is dangerous. Okay? If you're sliding down the hill, then you're just gonna run into that airport, and that is going to be totally inappropriate.
That's your three minutes. Thanks very much.
Okay, I have the rest of my comments. Please read them, please do not skip over them. I've lived there 30 years, here 30 years, 29 years in South Glenwood, and my concerns are valid, and I hope that you will be listening to us.
And I agree.
Thank you, Renee.
That's something else that is not going to happen again, if it is. I will ask the police to actually clear everyone from the room. There's not gonna be cheering, there's not gonna be clapping, there's not going to be any addressing of anybody, except the person who is standing at the podium will address the council. That's the way this meeting is going to happen. Okay, so, please understand that. The next person on the list is Sarah Gordon.
I'll be brief. My name is Sarah Gordon, I live in South Glenwood Springs. As you know, I, along with my husband, we both grew up here, and we both moved back to Glenwood Springs from vibrant, economically booming cities of San Diego and Portland. And we brought our kids back here to raise them, here, to be safe. In Portland and in Hill, in San Diego, we lived in gentrified neighborhoods that were a little bit sketchy, but I felt safe being out and about in my neighborhood from 5:00 AM until about 10:00 PM. In my neighborhood in South Glenwood, I feel restricted from dawn, uh, from dusk to dawn. Mountain lions, creepy people on Atkinson Trail, I've seen them down there. I want to be able to get out of my neighborhood and run after my kids are in bed at 8 o'clock at night. I don't currently feel safe. I'm here to speak on behalf of the sidewalk, and I feel like a sidewalk is not TVs in the back of the car, or luxury leather heated seats for the car. A sidewalk is a vital part of our neighborhood, and, and that's what I want to say, and my daughter wants to say something too.
My name is Bridgette, and I'm on a sidewalk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Natalie Kellum?
My name is Natalie Kellum, I live at 3229 Hager Lane in Glenwood Springs. And recapping my experience with Midland Safety, I've had not one, and not two, but three cars in my backyard. Two of them were in the same day. It's getting closer and closer to homes, I think we can all agree that it's dangerous and unsafe. But I would like to address the things that came up in the work session, and I'm very glad I attended it. I don't think that it was any mistake on social media. As you talk about the things that we're trying to save money on, my redneck response is, you're asking someone to build a tiny home, a smaller and smaller space that you're in, it's much like a remodel. Sometimes if you'll just give these guys the space to do what they need to do, they can do the project better for you. I think that's a very valid reason, to go ahead and do rockfall mitigation and do everything correctly, not only for our safety, but it seems to be the standard of how guys get things done. So, there's nothing worse than trying to work on a bathroom through a tiny hole, let's open up the bathroom and let them do their job. Secondly, it's gonna be a nightmare to get my kid to school, and getting kids to school is a very important part of any community. Not just for safety, but if we don't open up and let them do the project where we can work around it, then we're gonna be down to one lane. That doesn't seem fair to anyone. And then lastly, constructability, cost, timeframe, doing it in a smaller area. I think that we can talk about it, and we really appreciate your time. I'm glad to know as a citizen that people are paying attention to the details, but I've came for just one session, and I can say, my solid opinion is that we need to make sure we go at least 40, so that we can get water drainage, rockfall mitigation, some safe sidewalks, and some livability during the project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Amber Whissing?
No, hold on, does anyone else agree with me?
No.
I'll pass in the spirit over to Nancy.
Thank you. John Banks?
I don't have the same thinking, so I don't share that opinion, but I'll pass in the interest of your time.
Thanks, John. Ty Richardson?
I'm Ty Richardson, I'm a resident of South Canyon. I'm here to talk about the South Canyon potential development. Actually, being a resident of South Canyon for many years, if you want to refer me to as that guy who lives in the city dump, that's fine with me. I was just gonna say, I've looked at Mr. Beckley's lease several times, I believe the lease of this magnitude should be brought to the vote of the Glenwood residents. It has the potential of becoming a 101-year lease. It is really a transfer of land, a land acquisition. Every proposed private land sale, trade, or exchange of the South Canyon City property has always been brought to the vote of the public. There was one in 19, it was a public vote in 1970, and another one in 1995, which I believe was Todd's, right? Okay. That being said, Mr. Beckley's lease before you includes 1,898 acres of South Canyon City property. Brian Smith mentioned that the total area of Mr. Beckley's project is only 25 acres. The lease, as written, includes the landfill and the gun range. It would definitely be in the best interest of Mr. Beckley if the gun range is closed. Mr. Beckley's lease states the city will receive 5% of gross revenues. This is way below market value. Let's put this 5% in perspective. In 2007, the city landfill made $3.3 million. This brought 65% of yearly grocery revenues to the city. We talk about Mr. Beckley's 5%, the landfill was able to do 65%. Now that being in perspective, the city dump, which once made 65% profit, was contracted out to a national company, and is now losing $1 million a year. You have to be real careful about long-term leases. Otherwise, the city could be funding another loss in South Canyon. However, I do understand, close the dump, the city saves $1 million, and the pollution problems of the South Canyon stream beds go away. Let's just remember, under Mr. Beckley's lease, not one penny will be paid to the city until revenue is being generated. That could be two years from now, or 17 years from now. All Beckley has to do is lock up the lease. This lease should be brought to the vote of the public people. I believe South Canyon should be a day-use area only. This project has two RV campgrounds. One is at the foot of a burning coal seam. Many people will be sleeping at night at the base of a wildfire launch pad, an ignition source with a chimney. So let me go on record, people's lives are at risk, this has been not only unresponsible, but it's been negligent. Let us vote, thank you.
Thanks, Ty. Erica Arnsman?
Hi, and thank you, all of you, for coming tonight, and thank you for listening to all of us. My name's Erica Arnsman, I live in the Red Mountain neighborhood off of Midland. And I'm here because I believe that the history of South Canyon is an important part of its legacy, so I'd like to talk a little bit about it. So today, a lot of people know South Canyon because of the landfill, because of the shooting range, or the hot springs that people have gone to on the river. The area has been home to a lot of really important history in Glenwood's past. So, South Canyon's coal mining history began in the mid-1880s, when east coast investors began developing just 640 acres to the west of town. When mining began after the turn of the century, South Canyon became home to 300 coal miners and their families. Miners lived in shared homes, they tended to vegetable gardens, they hunted year-round to supplement their yearly grocery deliveries. Children lived in the camp and walked a quarter mile to a small one-room schoolhouse every day. The area also had a small pioneer cemetery, with gravestones dating back from as early as 1898. As many of you know, South Canyon is home to Colorado's largest underground coal fire, still burning today, and has been burning since soon after the mining operation started in the early 20th century. When the Wheeler vein in the coal, in the coal camp caught fire in 1910, miners were able to close off the burning section and continue their operations, but the fire continued to burn, and eventually caused an explosion in the early 1950s that stopped South Canyon's mining operations for good. And as you all know, those fires have continued well into the last decade or so, with the Storm King Fire and the 2002 Coal Seam Fire. The environment of South Canyon is rugged, with pinion pine and juniper bush. The 2,900 acres of the South Canyon parklands stretch from the Colorado River up to the mountains, and are home to a bunch of different kinds of wildlife, bears, deer, beavers. Anybody who's driven through South Canyon can tell you that you could find almost anything we have in that canyon. South Canyon's history is rich, and it's varied. And as a citizen of Glenwood Springs who grew up here, I hope that any future development honors that history by being small-scale, soft in its ecological footprint, and supported by the people of this community. Considering the potential of any development project to significantly affect the landscape, the accessibility, and the wildlife that live in South Canyon, I hope, and I hope that you agree, that any significant transfer of public land to a private entity will be subject to a public vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Kaylee Arnsman?
Hi, my name's Kaylee Arnsman. My, I, I live also in the Red Mountain neighborhood on 1019 River View Drive. My family moved to Glenwood Springs just before I started kindergarten, and I've called this area home ever since. I went to school in Glenwood from 1997 to 2010, proud Glenwood Springs High School graduate here. Since graduating, I've taught as a long and short-term music substitute throughout the valley. And I'm currently studying to be a music teacher at the University of Northern Colorado, spring break right now. When I'm done with school, my dream is to move back to Glenwood Springs and start my life and my family here, because Glenwood Springs is my hometown. It's the site of some of my happiest memories, and I couldn't think of a better place to raise a family. A big part of why I'm so drawn to this area is its commitment to wild green spaces. Glenwood's rivers and mountains make this community a beautiful place to live, to work, and to play. Not every community values the outdoors as much as we do here in Glenwood Springs, and our wilderness is a huge part of what makes this a beautiful place. When I first heard about a potential new hot springs development in South Canyon, I was excited. I've been going to the Glenwood Cavern since they first reopened when I was in third grade. I love the Iron Mountain Hot Springs, and I think that Steve Beckley has done some really wonderful things for the city of Glenwood Springs. But as I learned more about the plans for this development, I grew skeptical. Do we really need a campground with room for 100 or more RVs situated by the small natural hot springs? And do we really want to develop one of Glenwood Springs' less truly wild and truly free spaces? Before the city agrees to give this exploratory lease in South Canyon, I think this matter must be put to the vote of the people. Maybe more people will support it than don't, and that's fine, but I believe that any land transfer of this scope and scale must be agreed upon by the citizens of this city. I love my hometown, and that's why I care so much that this issue be voted on. Thank you.
Thanks, Kaylee. Craig Amashaw?
Craig Amashaw, 163 County Road 132, here to talk about South Canyon. So we actually put together a group, it's called the South Canyon Coalition. So we're here to announce that. Jim Olt is the primary contact for the group, he couldn't be here because he's in Denver, but we met with a real diverse group of people. Erica and Kaylee, some young folks, and some students from the CMC Environmental Program also came over to help us out, as, as well as the, you know, the old and tired like myself here. So, I think the, the thing was, that we gathered was, is that South Canyon's solution needs to be gentle tracks. It is a very fragile, it is a very dangerous canyon. We do not want this on the legacy of the city of Glenwood Springs, to put a large resort village inside one of the most dangerous canyons in the entire state. And anything that we do do, we need to come up with solutions, and we're hoping to bring you guys some solutions. So we're, we're not just gonna talk about what we shouldn't do, we're hoping to come up with some solutions. I personally think some of those solutions involve integrating Colorado State University's Environmental and Business Program and CMC's Environmental Program, because South Canyon is complicated. In order to understand that, you have to walk that entire canyon. It is extremely dangerous, it is extremely fragile. We have wetlands out there, we have geothermal activity, and there's just, there's just no room to turn around anything up there. I looked at the plans, I own a campground, that's what I, I grew up in a campground. Those plans do not work inside that canyon, plain and simple. You will have an extreme backup of RVs, trash trucks, and people trying to get in and out of that canyon. And it's just not a responsible thing to do. But we want to come up with solutions, we're gonna try and bring you guys some solutions, but our number one priority is that this has to go to a public vote. We're gonna demand that. And so you will be hearing a lot about South Canyon. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Craig. Steve Barbie?
Thank you for your time. Steve Barbie, 509 West 12th Street, Glenwood. I'm also involved with the South Canyon Coalition, and we are not an anti-development group. We really want South Canyon, though, to be developed in a manner that's respecting the canyon and its history, as well as the citizens of Glenwood Springs. There are four other major concerns that we have. First of all, the development is planned to go on top of riparian zones that are recognized by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The lower site was a formerly designated wetland, which can receive status again. The Army Corps of Engineers has said that they will step in and stop the exploratory drilling if drilling equipment shows up on the site. Our second concern is that the campgrounds are gonna be built on top of the forthcoming South Canyon mountain bike trail system, which the city council, I will applaud, for fully funding, as well as the state of Colorado and Garfield County. If these RV parks are gonna be built on top of the mountain bike systems, I can imagine that the state, as well as the county, are going to say that this is a violation of their funding agreements. The third concern has been touched on briefly, that's the fire hazard. Certainly evacuating 110 RV spaces, fifth wheelers, motorhomes, as well as the occupants of South Canyon is going to be a chaotic bottleneck, with the potential for loss of life and property. Another concern, if the fire doesn't get the campgrounds, the bears out of the dump will. These are bears that are not at all scared of human activity. They will come into the campgrounds, and then will wreak havoc. And so the Department of Wildlife is gonna be called on frequently to kill these bears, because they cannot be relocated, these bears have already been tainted. Again, we really want to promote proper development in South Canyon. I thank the council for supporting the development of mountain biking on Red Mountain, as well as in South Canyon. We believe it's gonna be a very big economic driver for the area. If the campgrounds are built on top of the mountain bike trails, though, the mountain bikers will not arrive as anticipated. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Jennifer Vanyan?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Vanyan, I live at 1016 Minter Avenue. I want to apologize in advance, because I'm gonna make some people uncomfortable. I didn't really want to have, I didn't want to do this publicly, but I am going to. I sent a letter to my council dated March 5th, and I'd like to read it right now, because I didn't get any response. Or I didn't, um, anyway. Dear Deborah, Steve, Michael, Todd, Jonathan, Shelley, and Jim, The city is in the process of addressing property owners of both homes and ADUs. I attended the meeting and wanted to clarify something. Is it the council's routine part of the job to make sure it reflects the interests of the majority of the people? Is it also part of the job to examine itself and make sure there's no possibility of anyone in the council having a conflict of interest? Any counselor that may have promotions, benefits, job assignments, bonuses, or other rewards is in the position of great scrutiny of the public. It is unfair to this counselor to be put in a position of a vote that could later help his business, but ruin his trust within the community. As a favor to these two counselors who may have conflicts, I ask the council to recuse Todd Leahy and Steve Davis from the discussion, since it immediately conflicts with their personal business. I did receive one response, for which I am thankful, from, I think it might have been Jim, but I'm not sure, and he said he was unaware of the business that those two councils are in. And that leads me to the city's webpage. Thank you to Mike Gamba, he's the only one who has submitted his bio. Where he's from, what he's done, what he does for a living, what boards he's on. So I'm asking right now, the council will fill that page out, because the public needs to know who you are and what you've done. It's not really difficult with Wi-Fi to find out what's going on nowadays. And there are more conflicts of interest coming up. There's land in South Canyon that's a conflict. And I just want the city to understand that I'm a force to be reckoned with. And I'm an emotional woman, and I'm passionate about my city. And for the record, I want you to know that I'm, I'm with the group that's for South Canyon, and I'm starting the process to bring it to a vote, and we will get our signatures. So I just want you to know what's up. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Heidi Houston?
Hi, I'm Heidi Houston. I'm one of a group of landowners that own a ranch up in South Canyon. And we're not against development, but we are, we do think you need to take ownership of this park, turn it into a really beautiful area. I don't even know where you're gonna have the mountain bikers park at this point. But we think that you don't want to come in, and you don't want to see rows and rows of RVs. You want to keep it beautiful, you want to make this a park system that can grow and be used by all the people, and stay beautiful. We're very concerned about the environment, too, especially concerned about people dropping trash. We're worried about fires, there is no fire service up there. And so we're pretty much, we're not part of the coalition yet, but it sounds like we probably will be. We do think you should have, have it brought to a vote, and we just want you to know our concerns. That's it. Thank you for letting us come in.
Thank you. All right, is there, that's the end of our sign up sheet. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Mr. Van De Beek?
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't sign up, I wasn't aware of this. But thank you for your time. I'm, I'd like to bring you up to date on some plans that we are developing to address the illegal camping right above the Boy Scout Trail. You get there, for those of you that don't live in this part of town, we've got other parts of town.
Please address all your comments to us.
Sure, thank you. It's right above 8th, 8th Street going up the Boy Scout Trail. Within 200 feet of housing. Within two hundred feet of housing, there are some established camps that didn't exist five years ago. This area was pretty pristine, there is a trail called the Suicide Trail that leads up to it. And over the past three years, we've had a number of summer and spring and fall campers stay up there. I'm sure most of them are homeless individuals. And last year, I've asked the Chief of the Police Department, Terry, to put up a sign, "Illegal camping beyond this point," which the police department did. Following that, I've worked with the Feet My Sheep people to clean up the camps. I just checked a week ago, and the camps are being repopulated even though you're still up to ankle deep in mud. In fact, I had to, I had to throw my clothes away because I could hardly get there. The point is, it is extremely dangerous to the hillside. The hillside is severely degraded already, informal trails. And the campers are building platforms, cutting whatever little growth, natural growth there is, and then set up their camps for the summer. They are beginning to move in again because the winter shelter program is over. I thought about this and talked about this, and our FOV is sympathetic to the issue, but they will only work on restoration, which I've asked them to do on a volunteer basis, if the city will support this. Now, since these campers have to cross city property to get to their campsites, most of them are, in my understanding, still on city property, but some of them are in BLM. But I'm asking that the city will put up closed for restoration signs and enforce it, and properly notify the homeless shelter programs that their camps must be removed or will be removed if they don't comply. In that case, the RFOV with a group of volunteers will clean up the hillside, which is severely decorated. I hope any of you would join me in looking up there and check it out. So I, I'm asking the city to take this action, to put up closed for restoration signs and enforce the illegal camping ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you Jerry.
Thank you Jerry.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak about any item not on this evening's agenda? Going once, going twice. All right, we'll close that portion of the meeting and bring it back to council for any council comments. I don't usually, well, let's, let's give it a minute just to clear out. Please, please go ahead and take your conversations out in the hall. Hello, please take your conversations out in the hall, thanks. Nothing works, I don't think.
I think if you can just kind of raise your hand, I know it's tough because it's a flat dais to get each other's attention, but...
I, I did want to actually start with the council comments tonight. I don't normally take the first opportunity, but I want to acknowledge a city employee who has worked for the city for thirty-five years and is retiring on tomorrow. Is that right? So Jill Peterson, I just want to thank you for your thirty-five years of effort on behalf of the city of Glenwood Springs. Okay, anybody else want to make any comments?
Thanks for all your help over the years. I know you were here when I first got to town and started messing around with real estate and you were up in the planning department. I think I was calling you all the time, like, can I do this, can I do this? And you were always very helpful, so thank you for all those years of helping me.
Yes, and I'll reiterate that too. Jill, you were great to work with when I worked for the city years ago. And you were in the planning department, I was in the building department. And it's always a pleasure to work with you over the years, and you did a great job, so thanks. And enjoy, enjoy your retirement. I did have a comment. I was gonna speak to Jerry's comment a little bit, but I think he handled it really well, so. I'm also live on the east side of town though, and I'm concerned about the camps above. And, and they've, they've gone unregulated for quite a few years, and they've gotten a lot bigger than they used to be in the last five years. And it's a concern, and we're gonna have to figure out a way to address it. But I know it's a huge issue, so we won't go into that tonight.
Well, in that regard, I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to say that it sounds like, with respect to that issue, now that Chief Wilson and, and City Manager are back, I think we probably need to have some kind of a short work session or at least a report provided by city staff as to what our available options are in dealing with the homeless camping problem on Lookout Mountain. It is a safety issue, it's an environmental issue, and...
So I think a work session would be great, yeah, thanks.
I missed part of it, yes, we can do a work session. I can tell you, because I've already been well-trained in this, we don't have a lot of great options.
Right, I understand.
But we can definitely talk through them.
Okay, and then I had one other item. I received a call earlier in the week from Frosty Marriott, he's on the Carbondale Town Council. And they are in the process right now of creating a bear trash ordinance because they haven't had one to date. They're working with CPW and some other groups, and they're looking at the city's ordinance that we have. And they also, in doing that, I think they realize that if they, you know, they can put one in place, but if, if the county's not doing something also, then they, they're, it can't be as effective. So what they're going to do is Monday morning, they're planning to go to the BOCC meeting and request from Garfield County that Garfield County will work with them to enforce that bear trash ordinance within that three-mile radius around the city. And they would love for Glenwood Springs to join them in that request. So I just wanted to see if council would like to do that and if we have someone from staff that could maybe go to that BOCC meeting Monday morning. And I would be happy to go for council if we want, or if someone else wants to go, we can do that, but just...
I, I attend all sorts of meetings, I'm happy not to attend.
I, yeah, I don't really need another one, but I'd be happy to go on that and work with Carbondale and that, so.
Does anyone on council have an objection to Shelley attending the next Board of County Commissioners meeting on behalf of the city and encouraging them to impose a three-mile, basically to buffer or whatever you want to call it, a...
And figure out a way to work, you know, with the county to enforce that, to force the bear...
For the bear-proof garbage receptacle ordinance?
Terry, would you want to come along?
Shelley, I think another really important thing would be to try to, you know, it's kind of a hurry now with it happening Monday.
And I don't know, it could be...
They'd get CPW involved.
Okay.
Dan Kachoe, he was, he was really critical to the city in putting ours together.
Okay.
Has worked with every community that's done it. So I think having his input and their statistics and knowledge of the bear activity in the valley would be really critical to helping nudge the county in that direction.
Okay, and I'll check in with Frosty and see, maybe they already have them...
If they have them, they should.
Would you like to come to the meeting?
Oh, absolutely, no. If you lucky, you have a time, you'll be representative.
All right.
And the city of Carbondale had reached out to me today as well, so.
Oh, great, okay. So maybe this...
We will find a staff person to talk about it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is that, anything else, Shelley?
Nope.
Anybody else have any comments you'd like to make?
I just want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Appreciate your comments, appreciate your passion. Also appreciate the people that showed up just to get more informed, more educated, but didn't feel the need to comment, so thank you for helping democracy.
All right. At this point, I will identify that there is going to be two agenda changes on this evening's agenda. Consent item fifteen E is going to be pulled from the consent agenda to be considered at the April fifth meeting. And item sixteen has been removed from the agenda for the time being, so.
Fifteen E, is that the minutes?
Fifteen E is the minutes.
So we're pulling, okay.
We're just removing apparently the minutes for the regular meeting of March first, not the February twenty-eighth minutes.
Oh, okay, okay.
We were down at least one staff person, not a month.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to item fifteen E to reflect that the minutes for March first, two thousand eighteen, regular council meeting will be on a consent agenda at a future meeting.
So...
All right, we have a motion by Jim and a second by Rick to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, skipping item sixteen. Item seventeen is authorization for the Three Mile Stream Confluence design. Is there a presentation on that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a proposal from Resource Engineering to provide professional services for shoreline improvements at the Three Mile Stream Confluence. This was based off a recommendation from the River Commission and members of the council for addressing the erosion issues at that confluenced bank. We have a couple of park-like amenities out there with a table and some benches. The area is well-used by the public. My family goes down there quite a bit, and we see other families down there. With the natural course of the rivers, we have quite a bit of erosion that's happening there that is threatening those bench and table and the sandy beach area. So this is a proposal for design elements and permitting and related fees in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars for that proposal with work to be completed this year in August along with the improvements and construction of the shoreline at Veltus Park. And I'm, they'll, any questions, yes?
Question, I have a question on, so is this primarily just a, like, a short-term repairing of the erosion? Or will this actually include some work to prevent further erosion and maybe enhance that area a little bit, or is this, what level are you looking at here?
Yeah, this is a little less of a level of shoreline restoration and more of just erosion protection. It is meant to be permanent, long-term erosion protection. It won't be on the scale that we'll have at Veltus Park, but we'll be actually adding to and shaping the shoreline and putting in, you know, rock bench-type elements and things like that. But we will be anchoring in some stone riparian-type features just to help mitigate that erosion there.
Okay, are there, I know there's, there's been a little bit of talk about longer term, possibly making that park and then, or enhancing the area to just accommodate some of the higher usage that it sees nowadays.
Yes.
See that coming up anytime soon, or...
That, yes, that is, so we are meeting out there, I think, next week. The River Commission and the Parks Department are working and evaluating that area. It is not a designated parkland, but the use of it is, is pretty much that. It's a, it's a popular drop-off midpoint for a lot of the river users. But there aren't facilities out there, we don't have restrooms out there.
Right.
And, and we only have just the one table and bench. But it gets a lot more use than, than what accommodations are available. So we are looking at how we can keep the natural feel of the area, but provide some amenities, especially restrooms or...
Maybe boat pullouts or...
Right, and anchoring points for boats and things like that, yeah.
Okay, I think a park designation would have to come back to council because that has legal implications.
Okay.
Mr. Davis?
So Brian, and maybe I missed it, was the cost associated with this design work, is that...
Yes.
And what is that, did you say?
Twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
So then once that design, I don't think this works.
Does it?
Kind of working, so.
Kind of fried a little bit.
Once that's, oh, there you go. How long will that design take and when will we expect to see that back in front of us? The, the proposal... I don't have a, I don't have a estimated date, oh. I don't have an estimated date for the completion of the design, but it should be able to move very quickly. The permits that would be required for the in-water work and the de-waterization, we've actually already acquired those. We, we went ahead and were doing a lot of the work for the Three Mile Protection along with the Veltus permitting, because they're the same permits. So we're, we're actually halfway there. There was already a conceptual design that has been drawn up, and so we should be able to move to sixty percent. Get that to council, get your eyes on it, see if there's anything that you don't like about it, and then make final design changes. But it's, it's a very simple and pretty small project we're looking at with... Yeah, and the permitting actually piggybacks on Veltus. That's right, yeah.
Rick?
So just for the public record, there's a typo on the amount in the agenda? Says...
Not sure how you'd read that. Twelve five one five five point zero zero.
Yeah, zero zero. I didn't know if we needed to move a decimal point or a comma.
Yeah, that was... There's one extra five, is...
Not my fault, I copied that from the proposal, so. But yes, yeah, you're right, that's correct, we have a, I think it's an extra five in there, yeah.
Any further comment or questions for Brian?
Is there gonna be, as a part of this, is there gonna be any anchoring spots for rafting or any...
Yes, yeah, that's part of the design is, is a tie-off anchor point.
Maybe not quite on point, but, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about the issues of the restrooms down there.
Yes.
Is there any plan for that for this spring's runoff during what would be a high-warp-marked voting season?
Yeah, we'll be putting portlets out there, and that's part of what the River Commission and the Parks Department is going out to evaluate, the placement and where we put those. So it just, so it, it still makes the area look nice.
That'd be great, thank you.
Set back a little bit from the shoreline.
Also off-topic, but does that mosquito pond need to be there as well?
No, that will be removed, it does, it doesn't serve the purpose that it was constructed for anymore. There is still, I think there's a gateway that is leaking into that, but we are looking at removing that or seeing how we can make that not such a mosquito habitat, yeah.
Shelley?
Are you ready for a motion, or are you going to take public?
I need to open it up to public comment, yeah. Any further questions for Brian? All right, thanks Brian. At this point, I would open this item up for any public comment. It's a consideration to enter in an agreement with Resource Engineering contract amount of twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars to design some shoreline improvements at the Three Mile Creek Confluence with the Orange Fork River. All right, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment, bring it back to council for a motion. Alright, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment, bring it back to council for a motion.
Uh, we'll make a motion that we approve the contract with R E P for professional services for shoreline improvements at the Three Mile Stream Confluence in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
A motion by Shelley and a second by Steve to, uh, award the contract of professional services to Resource Engineering for preliminary design of the Three Mile Stream Confluence improvements for an amount not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Any further, uh, comments? Um, we can't call the questions, so we'll have to take a voice vote.
Cal?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Motion has been announced.
Alright, moving on to resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirteen. A resolution of the City Council of City of Glorious Springs, Colorado, authorizing the sole source procurement of material purchase and installation, including granite pavers, boulders, and conduit for the area of Seventh Street under the Grand Avenue Bridge. And we have a presentation by Terry and Shannon.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, open up the floor really to Shannon, she's, um, putting her presentation up. Um, as you know, we authorized the sole source materials purchase a couple of meetings ago and now we're going to talk a little bit about the, um, actual installation of those stones.
And just so you know, um, when Shannon says Shannon is finished, I did want Steve Boyd to go over a spreadsheet with you to show you how we're tracking costs on this project.
Deborah, I do have that spreadsheet right here.
Excellent.
Um, if you want me to go ahead and pass it around.
Let, let Shannon go first.
Okay.
Thanks, you all, good to see you again. Um, this is the plan we reviewed during the last session. The stone for the underbridge plaza, the rectangle that's directly under the bridge, that was approved to be purchased. It's being quarried and should be on its way to us very soon. The contractor to install this piece is what you're reviewing tonight. So we have a bid from the masonry company to install the granite. It's a sandset granite over the concrete subbase that was, that will be installed by C dot. Um, I just was at the site this evening, it looks like they're installing the concrete very soon. So the subbase is prepped and compacted. Um, the contractor, the masonry contractor, will also install conduit in our sand bed between the concrete and the stone so that we can pull things through the conduit to locations within this plaza. Um, also in the contractor's list is installing the boulders that are features coming through the plaza. And then for your review tonight as well is the price of the boulder purchase. Um, they're a Colorado stone, it's very much the cousin of our canyon. Um, coming from a similar quarry that we get the rose, um, red flagstone as well. So they're more of a buff color, they're amazing. So I'll show you some quick pictures of the boulders as well, 'cause we like a little bit of candy. So here they are, we've already selected them, they've been priced. Um, we got a great price on these because they're coming from their sort of scrap pile, but they're not very busy right now, it's preseason. So they let me pick and choose out of their scrap pile. So we got the scrap price, but they're actually really nice primo boulders. So that pricing is coming from, um, Source Stone. And the boulders supplied, delivered to the site and offloaded on-site. Um, that's the price of twenty-two thousand that you see in your summary. And then Nunez Masonry to set those in the plaza, cut our granite around the boulders, that's included in the Nunez bid of one eighteen seven sixty-nine. The granite, this first line item up here, that was the purchase you approved last meeting. Um, we're looking at sort of a summary price of this plaza, including the granite material, um, of about three eighty-four. The other line items that we're including in here, these are allowances, so you guys can start tracking some of these big things. We have, um, some adjustments just to the edges of the plaza. So that's the thirteen thousand for, um, how we meet the edges that C dot leaves us. There's twenty-eight hundred in for, uh, temporary solution in these areas that are, will be the future fountains. Um, because our stone is five inches higher than the concrete subbase, we have five inches of depth to work with in those places. We're actually not installing the granite here 'cause it would have to be removed. Um, we didn't purchase the granite for these locations because we didn't want to spend the extra money. So in this temporary condition before the fountains are completed, design, pricing, all of your review, um, we're actually proposing these B little play areas. So potentially sand, some low-play things, things like that, so they're intentional until the final build-out. Then, um, we have irrigation and some other things, just to bring some greenery into the space. We have a hundred thousand dollars for additional lighting. So C dot has lighting under the bridge, they're more of a dome fixture that are mounted right to the underside of the concrete bridge. Um, they're not really character lighting, they're more safety lighting and utilitarian. So we are looking at a placeholder for a hundred thousand dollars for additional lighting that really makes the space a little bit warmer and intended. So we, the D D A is working with a lighting consultant to start bringing those ideas forward and you will see those before, uh, final price is approved. But we want you to see sort of the big picture of the space. Um, the design is intended with that budget as a target. So they're designing to that target, not designing pie in the sky to come back and find out it's five hundred thousand. I have a little lighting show and tell for you guys as well. Um, and then there's some additional conduit and things for that lighting that we're holding a placeholder of three thousand for that. So, um, performance bonds, some material testing, there might be a little bit of demolition still needed. And then just a force account, we've been carrying this in budgets for quite a while, that if there are any things that come up that the city wants to have done while this project's being built, we're giving you a little twenty-five thousand dollar placeholder so that those decisions can be made quickly. So including all of those things, we're at about four thirty-eight. And that's how the numbers are kind of falling into place. And we do have some other budget, sort of bigger picture budget numbers for your review as well. So let me show you a little show and tell about a cool lighting project and then I'll turn questions over to you guys. Um, we're contemplating more of a string light. So there's a great product on the market now that allows the fixtures to be placed at different spots along the cable and different fixture types, so the fixtures can be mixed and matched, but also changed if the space ever changes. So, um, one of the fixtures that we happen to really like feels a bit more of a storeroom. So the strand, here's the cable and these mounts to the cable and they're all movable, spread apart. Um, I don't have the exact thing that holds this in place, but this fixture is actually more like a historic vault. So it feels a little more in keeping with some of the character of the space we're talking about. Instead of a more contemporary kind of string light that we see in places like Laramore Square, our alleyways that can string light, so it's a pretty fun new product.
Wouldn't that be high enough that the wind could reach it?
Yeah, so there is a low part of the bridge as it comes to the abutment, this wouldn't be appropriate there because we don't want people to be able to hug on it and swing from it.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So that's our show and tell, love to open it up to questions.
Thanks Shannon, any questions for Shannon?
Could you and Derek look at that today?
That sand bed under the?
So after you and I spoke, I went and looked at it, they've already started compacting it, um, with a roller compactor. And so Derek hasn't looked at it yet, we'll take a peek.
It, it struck you as odd as well?
No, now that they've compacted it, it didn't strike me as odd.
It does look like a sand though, not a, uh, aggregate, is that?
Now that it's compacted, it, so I didn't see it as a loose sand product. I didn't go in there, I didn't have, I didn't check in with their office, I was just looking from the outside. So we will definitely have Derek take a look at it.
Okay. Um, so, so just for clarification purposes, for today's, um, resolution, we are authorizing a sole source bid in the amount of roughly a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, is that the right number? For the two items, it's twenty-two thousand plus the hundred and eighteen seven sixty-nine? Because we've already authorized the hundred and four seven twenty.
Yeah, the sole source resolution should be for, um, three hundred and thirty-three, three ninety-one. Um, because that includes not, uh, the, we've already paved where the granite, but that would include the, um, the boulders and the granite pavers, the installation of those boulders, and allowance for material purch- per- purchase and the installation of the pavers, um, sandbox elements, irrigation, additional lighting, and conduit adjustments.
I see, so we're, we're looking for a sole source bid on everything on this list. I was thinking it was just the installation of the granite and the boulders.
No, we're, we're gonna try and, and get everything in there outside of the fountains, I would say.
I see, okay.
When do the fountains, when do we see a number on that, when might they show up?
Your landscape architect was really busy getting this put together, so that is next on our list. So we'll start designing the fountains, um, so that we have an actual hard bid for those. So you'll be able to see, you, you saw the schematic design, you'll be able to see the construction details and the price from the fountain manufacturer. I can't commit to an exact timeframe, but it's, we're starting that now that this is off our plate.
Okay.
Are we, eh, oh, sorry. Um. Terry or Shannon, one of you mentioned that you had, um, some numbers or stuff been put together for the project?
Yeah.
I'd just like to, you know, rather than piecemealing this, I, I feel like, you know, we're walking into something without a full idea of where we're going.
Yeah, I'll sneak a presentation on the, on the flash granite work, just been keeping a spreadsheet of the, um, of the costs that are included in that A and I line item, so that we don't overspend the line item.
Okay. And is our intention to do something like this for all of the projects that were funded in that one big A and I number?
Okay, yeah.
So before we get to, uh, Steve, Shannon, maybe I could ask you a couple of the questions, um. So the play areas that you talked about, you know, by the fountains, is that like actually gonna be sort of a sandbox area?
Yeah, well, we're proposing in the footprint of the fountain, before the fountains arrive. Um, we already have the five-inch depth, our top of granite to the top of the concrete sub-slab gives us five inches. So we're going to fill that with sand. And presto, we have our sandboxes.
So, and you're gonna come by and sweep up the sand every night and put it back in? I'm just kidding. But, you know, there would be maybe some ramifications for keeping things sort of tidy under there. Not, you know, that I don't wanna really talk about, maybe too much tonight, but, uh, the lighting idea is the idea that we would have sort of a dust-to-dawn lighting scheme down there, um.
So that's a good question, um, the consultant that is working with the D D A on that piece will probably have some recommendations. Um, we wanted to give them a framework to work within and a budget ceiling that they couldn't exceed. Um, the, the way that C dot has their existing lights switched, um, they would be switched independently, which is really great. So, um, we will have the opportunity to have different types of lighting depending on what is happening in the space. And it's likely that we would want some sort of lower amount of security lighting after midnight or something till the morning. You know, I, I think those things get sorted out with the lighting consultant, but I can imagine a scenario that there are different levels of light and different fixtures on at a different hour of the night.
And then somewhere there's a couple of switches, right, so?
Yeah, so the, the ability to switch the different types of fixtures differently is being designed into the system.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Shannon before we move on to Steve Boyd's? Is it, go ahead Shelley?
I have one question, there are a bunch of layout, um, scenarios, it looks like. I'm just trying to, at the end of the presentation. Which one is one specifically what we're, you're going to be working towards right now? There's different, like, boulder layouts and things.
Hmm, okay.
Am I, maybe I'm, uh, sorry, just at the end, there's a bunch of drawings that show.
Mm-hmm, um, the boulders, the boulder placement itself has changed a little bit graphically, how we've been representing it.
Okay.
Just based on the quantities and sort of what we selected at the quarry. Um, so, and this isn't necessarily, it's, it's more diagrammatic of here's where the boulder locations are. It's not necessarily boulder per boulder. Um, but the intention of the boulders is that there's a spine of them that come through at this angle. And then they sort of overlap with each other. So we have some areas where they are just in granite. And that boulder outcropping is intended to be seat boulders, kids could play on it a little bit. So those are independent of this, sort of where they interact with the water features.
Okay, and as I look at them now, yeah, they're, the boulder layout is the same in everyone, I haven't looked at it that close, but. So right now, though, you're just kind of putting not all of those in, this is just a portion of them?
Yeah, we purchased the boulders for the whole space, um, because we were getting a very good price on them and we'd like to get them here, the boulders that interface with the fountains, they end up going to Grand Junction to actually be cut so that they hug the, the fountain, um, walls.
Okay.
So we will get them this far on their journey. And here on-site, we can place them in the order that they should be, um, arranged so that we can mark how they are to be cut. Then they'll continue the rest of their journey to Grand Junction and be cut and come back when the fountains are ready and they'll meet up against the face of the fountains.
Okay, great, thanks.
Alright, any other questions for Shannon? Thanks Shannon.
Pleasure.
Mr. Boyd.
Okay, evening everybody. So as you guys remember, uh, this line item was a little bit of a difficult one in this year's budget. Uh, there's a line item at A and I that's, uh, four point six million dollars. There were three or four projects that were kind of lumped together in that because we weren't able to really figure out where we thought we would spend that money this year. So it makes it a little bit challenging to keep track of it, we wanted to make sure that you guys were, were clear on how much had been spent and what you've got left available to spend against that, uh, budget number. So we're kind of proposing, um, to do it this way and we wanted to kind of get your feedback and see if you wanted any changes, um, before we go final with this and then we'll just kind of keep it up to date as we go along. So this is for Seventh Street. Um, we kind of plugged in this number right here, three point one million dollar as a budget, uh, total expenditure number. Uh, we sold the library, that was in our budget, however, a million dollars, we sold it for nine hundred thousand, so that number goes down by a hundred grand just to kind of keep track of where we are. You'll also remember, we did a number of things to get that three point one million dollars into our A and I budget. One of the things that we did is transfer basically all of the operating funds that the D D A has, uh, in their budget into this line item, so we'd have that available and cool as a whole. Uh, the D D A has asked that, um, you know, the contracts and everything that they're working on stay in their name and that we just transfer the money back, so we're gonna do that, but it's gonna drop the number, uh, that we're talking about in this budget available to this council by that three hundred thousand dollars, so that's how you get to two point seven.
I don't, I don't understand that, sorry, the three hundred thousand, what does that mean?
Yeah, so we, to get this three point one million dollars, we did a number of things. We rerouted some money away from the fleet fund that would normally go there, we have a, you know, we borrowed a little bit. We rerouted some money away from the fleet fund that would normally go there, we have a, you know, we borrowed a little bit of money from the fleet fund, uh, and a couple of other things. This three hundred thousand dollars is the money that goes into the DDA fund, right, as that TIF tax. That money then gets spent by the DDA in the downtown area, and it was primarily the DDA, you know, business owners down there that really wanted Seventh Street to get done, you know, as quickly as possible. And I think what you guys thought at the time is, you know, if you guys really want this to get done as quickly as possible, that money, you know, should be allocated to the project as, as a whole. So, that was actually the, the twenty eighteen budget, had that number, that three hundred thousand dollars in it as a transfer from the DDA into the A and I fund to support this project, so all the money would be in the same place.
And we thought everybody understood that, including the DDA, it turned out they did not. And several members of council did not, so we just kind of said, okay, but we just need to reduce the budget. So, we don't want, you know, to spend three hundred thousand dollars that we do not actually have access to.
In essence, sort of giving them the three hundred thousand back, basically.
Right, we can amend the budget, they can spend it, it's not the end product. But we just have to keep track of it.
And they could put her right back into this project.
Absolutely.
If they so choose to.
If they want, yeah, if their board chose to do so.
Thank you, I didn't remember that.
Okay, so that's how we get to this two point seven, uh, million dollar number. So, this column, column D here is our budget line item, these are the things that we've got in so far, uh, because we have an idea of what the cost is gonna be and stuff. So, we've got a budget line item here, uh, but what you guys really, I think, are gonna care about is what gets invoiced and what we know we're gonna spend against it. So, column E is what has actually been invoiced, I mean, these are things that have been done, uh, we owe the money, we know pretty much exactly what it's gonna be, uh, and there are three items in here that have been invoiced so far. This encumbrance over here in column F, this is kind of our best guess, it's gonna start out pretty similar to this budget number, and we'll keep moving this, uh, to stay with a forecast that is our best guess as to what we think we've committed to this project, right? Contractors, um, you know, planning, product, whatever we're purchasing, once we know, okay, we're gonna do it, we've got an agreement, then we'll encumber those funds so it doesn't look like they're available to spend anymore. Okay, so if you add these two numbers together, that's sort of what is spent against the project, and the balance over here is what remains. So, if you come down to this line, total funds committed to date, these are the things that are sort of in the project so far, because we know what we're gonna do and we have at least a, a guess at the cost. Uh, these are the things right here that we have actually invoiced and have already been done, and this is what's encumbered. So, these two numbers together, right here, add up to this number. And this is the total number of dollars that are actually committed in this project to date, right? And essentially can't be, you know, rerouted from here, they've, they've been committed. So, subtracting, uh, this number right here from the budget number above, you've got one point four six million, or one point four seven million, one point six five million, sorry? Um, and that's essentially the funds that are available, uh, in the project that haven't been encumbered or invoiced yet.
And we're assuming with this spreadsheet that you're saying yes to the project tonight. We also in there, there's a hundred thousand dollars that we just stuck in there for Sixth Street. There, the DDA is currently, um, working with business owners and city staff to come up with a kind of a lighting plan over there and some paint and temporary conditions, that was not in the budget. So, this is kind of ju- a placeholder for it, because once again, I just need to keep track of the money. And, you know, these numbers may change as we get a little more detail on it, but this is just our best guess right now to keep ourselves in line.
This original three point one million dollar budget now, two point seven, did not include any, uh, credits from, coming from C dot, is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's one thing that could change.
Yes. That's a target.
Um, Steve, just, maybe I'm not understanding the spreadsheet, but the, if it's budgeted for thirty-nine thousand, we've invoiced forty-five.
It costs more than we tried to do. Six thousand dollar change order.
Yeah, I, I, okay. Um, but shouldn't we be showing a, a negative amount then in the encumbered, or, I mean, are, are we? Is, we have the, a running total?
Yeah, so-
Or is that accounted for in some other formula, I don't, do I have this spreadsheet?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I don't think that, uh, you would have it yet.
It did not make it in the package.
Right, so, what's been invoiced is actually done. What's encumbered is, we know we're gonna do it, we've got some sort of an agreement or arrangement with somebody to do it. So, the money is spent, right?
And it's just reflected in the balance then?
Exactly, yeah, exactly right.
I wouldn't mind seeing a, a, a column that just shows overage or underage. Underage is a new word I just made up, but a, a, just kind of the delta of, kind of each one of those projects as we go along.
Each, each one of the projects or each one of these line items?
Line items, yeah.
Okay, so difference between what was budgeted and then what was invoiced slashed encumbered against that budget, correct?
It's a little hard to work against 'cause there, there was no budget. But now there is.
Well, that, these are kind of our estimates in some ways, so there's not a classic budget, we're kind of-
Well, I guess what I'd like to see is, I'm, I'm not bent out of shape over six thousand dollars, but that's, you know, fifteen percent. But that would be bent out of shape at four hundred fifty stores to in storms, or turn out to be six hundred. So, you know, I'd, I'd like to kind of, even though they're just best guesses in another budget, it'd be good just to have kind of a visual of seeing, here's how our best guesses are adding up.
That's easy, I can add that, no problem. What else, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Minor point, I think, but I, I thought I understood that these, the, the, the last four items listed here, um, the last four items, performance bonds, et cetera, were part of what we were approving or looking at tonight?
That is true.
Okay, so then, ju- I think, just to make that clear, the little stars or whatever, uh,
Should extend.
Should extend to, to those last four items as well, 'cause they're part of the-
Part of the approvals for tonight.
So, are the Seventh Street improvements and Sixth Street improvements, those aren't part of?
Those are not. So, it's, it's the ones I think that are starred, and then skip the Seventh and Sixth Street, and then the last four would be starred, and that'll add up to what we're, I think, I mean, I'm a calculator. That's part of what we're approving, including this twenty-five thousand, um, what is it called, the force counter. Okay, got it, thank you.
Good, got it, thank you, Jim.
All right, Rick, I think next, then, Shelley.
Yeah, just a quick kind of conceptual question, maybe, um, this spreadsheet is about the Seventh Street improvements. Um, it's really Seventh Street and Sixth Street to date improvements? I mean, would you agree with that?
Yeah.
I mean, someday, some archaeologist is gonna come by and say, what were they thinking, you know, they've got Sixth Street on here, and it's really not all of Seventh Street, it's just what we've agreed to for the end of the bridge. We still have a lot of projections to come about all of the street to the west.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to, you know, keep this in front of the council, so that we can see that as that project develops and we take more money for, you know, different elements that we're kind of spending that line item down.
Yeah. Um, so at some point then, will we come back and pull the Sixth Street out of this and have like a separate spreadsheet? Or is it just more convenient to bake them both together?
I guess we could, we, um, we're keeping separate spreadsheets for the other items, um, in the A and I budget that did have actual numbers associated with them, like South Ridge and, um, South Midland are in that number as well. Um, so, we could break them out, it wouldn't hurt us. It's just, we didn't end up with a budget for that Sixth Street, and it was important to have, um, some improvements there.
Sorry, maybe this is a Steve question, I'll stand down, three hundred thousand dollars, it's going back to the DDA, have they earmarked that for anything that we know about?
Have they earmarked it?
Yeah.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Okay, so it wasn't earmarked when we took it, and it may not be earmarked when we get it.
No, it, it was, you know, kind of taken to be tossed in to, you know, support this line item, you know, when we passed the budget. So, it's never really been allocated specifically.
Just real quick on that, just so you guys understand, that the DDA has its own funding source, so in order to keep, if you will, what I would say maybe proper books, or however you wanna say that word, but the DDA should take in the money that, 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 that the source is there to take in. And then if they wanna move it back out, it's more of an accounting thing than anything else. So, it was kind of, it was kind of taken out and just placed into this budget without going through the DDA's books and then back. So, there's almost a housekeeping thing that, it should just go that way, because the DDA is funded for a certain reason with a certain source. It should go, at least start out in their books where it should be, you know, and then if it comes back out, it would be a board decision, just like any other expenditure that they might have that's approved by us, and then there you go. So, that three hundred can come right back out, it just needed to go through the right channel.
Right, and we don't, yeah, no, I think that's well said. And we just don't wanna spend it twice, right?
Right.
Which we're not good at if we don't do.
But that's how that works.
Shelley?
Okay, and, and thank you very much for putting this budget together, Steve, or this tracking, it's helpful to see and to see what we had originally allocated this year. Um, but I do remember in, in much of our conversations that, you know, we've had ongoing talks, um, to try to get an understanding of what the full budget will be on the project, because, you know, this is one small piece of it under the bridge, and we, we still have quite a few sections to do along Seventh Street, the north side of Seventh Street, around the elevator and everything. And I know C dot's gonna do some of that under their contract work. So, I would like to see a work session or something where, um, because right now, we're spending money, but we're not working to a budget. And just as, as on other projects, we need to have an understanding of what our bottom line's gonna be.
We've invited Leslie to come back and kind of go through the bid and do that with you. These were, with, this sole source was a response to council's request to say, hey, can you happen to get this done before June thirtieth?
Right, and I know realizing we're getting some good deals on materials and-
But yes, it's still our intention to ask Leslie to come back and walk you through all that.
Yeah, one, and, and, and all those items are gonna go out to bid, and we've, we've, um, mentioned in, in prior meetings that talking about what ifs on it is, is not necessarily all that helpful, because, um, consultant estimates can vary sometimes fairly significantly from what we actually get in bids. So, we weren't going to talk about what ifs until we actually had bids in hand, and then we're gonna look at the bids, analyze them, determine what, if anything, we can, we can actually build with our budget. And, uh, and I believe, and, and I know Leslie's not here, I don't know, Shannon, if you feel comfortable speaking to this point, um, but my understanding is, every one of the elements of the project was bid with multiple alternatives, different materials, different options that are gonna be more or less expensive, so from those, you know, we will make a determination as to what we can afford to, to build. And so, I think that the, the, the date for that work session would be after the receipt of all those bids, is that?
No, we did ask Leslie to come back and kind of show, you guys had asked for kind of like a base bid, which this could be the base bid. So, before they put the bid out, you guys asked to see the bid, so Leslie does have to come back.
With, with numbers?
The bid packet, like what is being bid.
Okay, okay, got it.
And your summary was accurate, there will be an à la carte menu for different material proposals, and that's where, uh, you know, variation of pricing comes in. There are some components that are utilities and things that just are needed, that we don't have a lot of choice in the matter. Those, we're not giving a lot of pricing options, but the elements that do have options associated with them, yes, it will be set up that way, that you'll have some numbers to compare and make choices.
Thanks, Jim?
Uh, yeah, just, just related, I guess I'm maybe reminding myself more than any other, but, um, in, in the, as we look at, uh, when the bids come in and we begin to look at, uh, you know, costs, I, I, maybe at the same time, uh, we, in my view, should have a, a discussion of realistic sources of funding. You know, Steve opened by saying, uh, you know, we did some things this year in the budgeting process to try to get to this number, and some of those are, are one time, um, obviously the sale of the libraries one time, uh, but there was some, uh, monies that came from the fleet fund and things like this, and, and we probably can't take the money from the fleet fund every year, so, you know, it's, as we move forward to think about this, uh, it's not like we have, I don't think, three million dollars every year to, to, to use for this. So, that's gonna be a challenge, I think, for, uh, the staff, and, um, and something we ought to be keeping our eye on, it might be.
Jonathan? Shannon, you, I mean, I, Steve, thank you for giving this kind of a running total and score sheet, really. Um, and maybe this question is just answered by Leslie, who'll have a better presentation next time. Not a better presentation, you did great. Sorry, um, but, uh, just a, a better idea of the numbers and going forward, but, can you comment, and if you can, that's fine, on the, i- is one point oh four six million enough to get us to a point of, I wouldn't say completion, but a point of pause where folks can feel good and you guys feel good, the DDA feels good, about, okay, we, we accomplished what we wanted to accomplish with that original three point one?
Tonight is the first night I've seen this spreadsheet, so I-
Yeah, so the, go ahead. I mean, I don't know the answer to that, because, you know, I'm not as smart with this stuff as she is, but that million forty-six thousand dollar number that you see is just a, a running total of those line items that we've plugged into the budget so far. So, when those are gonna happen and how far it gets us down the line, I'm not really sure.
Rick? Yeah, just, I think this is great, um, you know, and it's nice to know that we can do that and still have about one point six left for Seventh Street. Has any thinking been developed about that amount and what might come next? Uh, you know, I know that we're still waiting for things by the elevator, we've got drainage issues, sewer issues and things like that, but as, you know, from your standpoint, your diet, Shannon, if you, uh, you know, now that you see a budget, what do you think we ought to be looking at?
Let me just add, this is literally the first time Shannon's seen this, I mean, we put this together to kind of try to get people from the-
Oh, sure, oh, sure, but I mean, yeah, I'm just trying to get a, an idea on what might come next.
But what you're saying, I think, is exactly right, and that's where we're going, which is to populate those things as we go along, and make it, you know, as transparent and linear as possible, so I didn't-
I think that is a better question for Leslie than Shannon.
And, and it probably is better, even, even at the next work session, the next work session is only gonna be limited to the options that we are going out to, to bid to the contractors with. Not, this is gonna cost us three million dollars, this is gonna cost us two million dollars, this is gonna cost us one million dollars. That's not what we're gonna be discussing, we're gonna be discussing what options are we asking contractors to give us prices for. Then, once we have prices, then we will be talking about what we're going to actually build in two thousand and eighteen. And it will be based on what money we have available to us, so. Yeah, I think that's-
We will end up with an à la carte list of items that we can pick and choose from.
Sure, yeah, no, I, you know, and just my point was that, you know, it's wonderful to see this, it's wonderful, we'll see things spelled out in black and white and have a game plan to choose options from, but just thinking and disciplining ourselves about looking a little further down the line, you know, what would we like to see happen, and I think it would be good for us to do some brainstorming now, and, you know, not wait until such time that all of this is underway, and then we go, okay, now what's next? You know, I would just like us to look a little bit down the horizon, so.
Totally agree, and-
And I'm not expecting an answer tonight, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to incubate here, okay?
Totally agree, there, there were two things going on, just a quick refresher. We really are looking at this rectangle directly under the bridge, um, because it, very recently, just at the last meeting, basically, you know, you all gave us direction, which I think is a really good direction, that let's, let's install that, because we have a good window, we can get that piece done, those businesses have suffered enough, let's get that piece done. So, we changed our focus to really getting that piece done. All of these things you're asking for, the bigger picture things, that's still in the works. So, we were able to get really great pricing on all of this element to get this piece done quickly and in a really great, great way, that's a smaller crew, that's not gonna be a big commotion for the businesses. It was really a smart move, and we got great prices because of our timing in it, and, um, incidentally, the stone, you guys were able to make a, a decision on purchasing the stone. Cold Springs Granite came back to me this week and said they've sold out all their remnant supply. Cold Springs Granite Granite came back to me this week and said they've sold out all their remnants supply. We got in in time. The price has now doubled since we signed the contract, so it could go up again. It, it was really a smart move and we knew, just looking at the quality of the stone, that it was a good deal and we jumped on it and it was a good thing we did. So this is a smart process. You're gonna see these other budget numbers as they develop. And just a quick explanation of that small change order, um, that you guys were understanding and the price, can we shift to your sheet just for a second? Um, so the price right here of the bid thirty-nine, um, versus the forty-five thousand. Just a quick summary for you guys. We purchased all the stone for the crosswalks under Seventh Street Bridge. Here's the elevator tower, the banding and the granite in the crosswalks. When this was purchased, we weren't aware that the sewer in front of the Pullman, that sewer work that CDOT is doing, that we'd have the opportunity to also do that crosswalk in that spot. So... Here's the Pullman, in front of the Pullman, this crosswalk here, the stairs down to the Train Depot. We have the opportunity to install this with our same product. Cold Spring was kind enough to let us do a change order to the existing contract, keep the old pricing. So now we have this material for this crosswalk as well. That's the change that you've seen in that piece.
And that was within ten percent, so let's see, do it.
Yeah, so they didn't change their price on us. We're, we have another component of the project that we can cross off, working with CDOT.
Ten percent of those first three line items on the top.
Yeah. All right, excellent. Um, any one else have any questions for Steve or Shannon? All right, thank you.
Yeah, so you guys think about it, and if you've got more feedback, let me know. I got Jonathan's point. I think kind of renaming it makes some sense. We don't really do encumbrances here. We don't really do project accounting, so we kind of, kind of have to do it by hand. But we do wanna make sure that you guys can see inside and, and know what's going on. So whatever changes you'd like us to make or clarify, just leave it.
All right.
And it was complicated, you know, we did the same thing with, you know, South Bridge, with South Nickland, with, you know...
Twenty-Seventh Street?
We didn't have, twenty-Seventh Street does not have a budget this year, really.
Yep.
Twenty-Seventh Street Bridge, we're not budgeting? We have, we have budget for twenty-Seventh Street Bridge this year?
We have right away, I think, budget for twenty-Seventh Street.
Yeah, we have only right away, on the rise.
Okay.
No, we have conversations to have.
Yes, yeah.
But, uh, this is...
But yes, generally that's the idea, if it was in that kind of that bigger pot of money, to always track it.
Okay. I thought, I thought we had some remaining design elements and, and bidding, and aren't we still planning on bidding it this year?
We are, yeah, and we are very close to completing our whole process, eh, outside of the right away. We're still working on right away.
Maybe a better way would have said that is, in that large sum of, large sum of money, twenty-Seventh Street Bridge was not included.
I see, okay, okay. Um, I, 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 I actually like this approach myself for every significant project. We don't need to do it on a fifteen thousand dollar, you know, improvement, but, you know, when we're dealing with projects in the millions of dollars range or tens of millions of dollars range, I think this is a good approach, so it helps us keep track from start to finish, you know, what, what we end up spending.
We should get an ERP.
I, I think maybe we, uh, decided to do that. Now, is it, when, when is it ready? Tomorrow?
Uh, it'll be ready Friday, yeah.
Friday, okay.
Now, this one's a hard one. It was a confusing one at the time, it's confusing now. It's the thing that we grind it on forever and ever during the budget cycle, so be a little bit of a work in process, but let me know what you guys need.
All right, at this point, I would open this up for any public comment. Anyone who would like to, from the public, would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close it to the public and bring it back to council for a, any further discussion or a motion?
I would move to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, authorizing the sole source procurement of material purchase and installation, including granite pavers, boulders and conduit for the area Seventh Street under the Grand Avenue Bridge.
Second. We have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Steve to approve resolution number twenty eighteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, authorizing the sole source procurement of material purchase and installation, including granite pavers, boulders and conduit for the area of Seventh Street under the Grand Avenue Bridge. Any further discussion?
Do you guys need a number on that, or are you just good with that?
Um, it's in the resolution, is that right?
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, um...
If you just take it around the time.
Um, all right, so Joe, would you please take a, a voice vote?
Gamba?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Gottes?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Lady?
Yes.
Wardens?
Yes.
All right, moving on, um, ordinance number eight, series of twenty eighteen, and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section zero six zero point zero two zero point zero two zero of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code by the inclusion of window replacement fees and changes to the city's policy regarding the issuance of temporary certificates, uh, certificates of occupancy.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is a really kind of a cleanup, um, ordinance. Um, last year, uh, City Council approved ordinance twenty, series twenty seventeen, adopting amended international and national codes um, regarding construction regulations. As part of that adoption, uh, the fee schedule that we adopted, inadvertently left out, um, the window replacement, uh, fee that we had, um, been historically charging. Um, it was found during auditing process and, uh, we wanted to, to rectify that. Um, the other part of, uh, this is to clean up the way that we handle, um, temporary certificates of occupancy. Uh, there have been a number of cases where we have held a, a TCO for, um, longer than a hundred and eighty days, um, without issuing a certificate of occupancy. The, the code is written, doesn't allow that. Um, it also, uh, we have a number of cases where we've, um, held a TCO for a number of years. Um, and the way the code reads today, um, we, when we, we take the money for the TCO, um, we are holding the, the bulk of that as a, a deposit, which is refunded at the end, um, of the, you know, when the TCO converts to, uh, a certificate of occupancy. Um, when they've been hold, being held for a number of years, um, it's kind of, uh, hard for finance to track. And so, um, one of the things that we're looking at with this is, um, including a provision to, uh, forfeit the deposit if a temporary CO is, um, extended beyond a year. Um, additionally, this would allow for a fee, um, for a one-time extension, um, beyond the initial hundred and eighty day extension. It doesn't have a time limit associated with it, uh, would give the building official the discretion, um, to say, you know, this project needs another hundred and eighty days, um, for instance, for instance, but we would be able to charge an additional hundred dollars for, um, the, that extension of the TCO. Um, with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Jen on this item? Shelley?
I have questions on the TCO, just, I'm trying to understand a scenario. I mean, a TCO is, you know, by its very definition, is intended to be temporary, um, and that means that there are outstanding code items, for whatever reason, have not been completed and there's some urgency that the occupant needs to move into the building. Um, I, I, I don't understand why we would want to allow that to be extended indefinitely and I, I guess I'm not real comfortable with allowing that to be extended indefinitely with only a hundred dollar fee. Um, and, you know, I was comfortable with a one-time extension, which has been in the code a long time, but I, I think a temporary CO is by definition intended to be temporary and it, and the whole, I mean, it's a, it's a privilege to allow people to move into that building for a short time, um, but, you know, it's, it's on them, their burden to get those co- code items wrapped up and get their CO done, so that they can permanently occupy that building. So that'd be my comment. I'm not comfortable with the change on the extension of the temporary CO.
We do have, uh, some cases where there are extenuating circum- circumstances. Um, an example where everything on one floor, um, which is the main operating location for a, a retail space, for instance, um, but had intended to have maybe two floors, um, be, um, occupied and, and usable for the business, um, and, um, for whatever reason, that project, the second piece of, phase of that, um, ends up extending beyond those hundred and eighty days. We have an example of that. We also have had, um, occasion where everything in terms of all the life safety, uh, requirements have been met. It, it's really, um, still, uh, a mechanism to get, um, our as-built sometimes, um, to, to extend a TCO. So it's not a matter of life safety, it's a, a, it's a matter of, um, sometimes, um, kind of the cleanup. But I, I recognize exactly what you're saying, that it is a privilege, so...
Yeah, but shouldn't a hundred and eighty days be long enough? And I guess if it's a scenario where they, they're gonna leave a portion of it unfinished, then go ahead and issue the CO and just designate that that portion is not to be occupied or only used for storage or whatever. And like, opening this wide, oh, I'm just not comfortable, and that's from, you know, ten years as a, as a building, um, in, working in building code compliance, and I'm just, I just understand what the purpose of that temporary CO is for. Um, and a hundred and eighty days, to me, that's half a year to get your act together and get your job done. And a lot of times it's things like handrails on stairways, um, it's things, you know, that shouldn't take that long to get accomplished. Other, if it's bigger than that, then they shouldn't be getting a TCO anyway. So that's just my feeling on it.
Uh, and I think sometimes it has nothing to do with a building at all. Rafta's BRT station is quite possibly still operating under a TCO.
I believe so.
Uh, has been for years because I believe of a lawsuit over some encroachments or other items that have been tied up in litigation.
You mean the, on twenty, the Rafta station?
Twenty-seventh Street Rafta Station.
That's not really an occupied building, is it? Or do they have a little occupied building portion?
Yeah, they do. Well, and, and if it gets issued a building permit, if it's going to be allowed to be used for whatever reason, it would get a TCO or ACO to close out that permit.
And still has not been accomplished.
So it's just some type of a...
That's just an example.
And that's just an example of how, you know, some, not everything fits in the box.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I've actually operated, uh, I've had a number of TCOs and all the things that I've done, it's always been some minor, you know, issue of the paint's not on the ceiling or, you know, the, the light cover's not in the shower or something that, that's easy to cure.
Some sink is not in, or, yeah.
But there are times when these things are not so easy to cure because of litigation or, or other things. And, um, and really doesn't, like in Rafta's situation, has nothing to do with, uh, the building at all, so...
But shouldn't that be more in exemption, I guess, rather than writing it into the code, that it's just a, that it's just a open, open season for it?
Yeah, I was just making the example, it's, it's not always as easy as I had imagined.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Carl, do you have any input on this issue in that regard?
You know, I, I tend to agree with, I mean, we don't, it's not a requirement that we would leave it open. The building official has a lot of discretion as to what that time limit would be. Um, and I think Steve makes a valid point. There are times when things happen that, uh, great example, elevators, our elevator, I think, is still sitting on a TCO because of a variety of reasons, that you just, you run into situations, it's not as clean as it's a house, you, or an addition, and you built it and you got your TCO and you got your CO and you're done. There are other things that that applies to as well. And so I guess I don't have a lot of concerns personally that we're gonna have indefinite occupation, uh, you know, occupying indefinitely a house, for instance, on a TCO.
Do we track TCOs?
We do, I mean, I think we do. We do know how many is out.
We do. I'm sorry, uh, uh, um, I don't know that I have the full list. I have the list that Finance brought to me of those that were being held for longer than a year, where we hadn't, um, refunded that deposit. And this was also identified actually through the, the auditing process. So, uh, there are a number for various reasons, um, and I think if it's longer than a year, that one thing that we're looking for is, um, the Finance piece to be able to say that those, that that deposit is then forfeit and that we wouldn't be refunding that money.
Right.
Will this make it into the new code? I mean, we're, we're changing part of our code, isn't it?
Well, this is in oh six oh.
Oh, this is not oh six oh.
This has nothing to do with zero seven zero.
Any other questions for Jen, for...
Sort of am I categorizing this right? Is it somewhat of a housekeeping issue for you guys so that, so that things can get, okay, okay.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, at this point, I would open up to the public for any public comment. Seeing none, I will close it to the public and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Don't all speak at once.
I'll go ahead and take a motion. Um, I would move to approve ordinance number eight, an ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section oh six oh, oh two oh, oh two oh, of Glenwood Springs Municipal Code by the inclusion of, of window replacement fees and changes to the city's policy regarding the issuance of temporary certificates of occupancy.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Todd and a second by Rick to approve ordinance number eight, series of twenty eighteen, and ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section zero six zero point zero two zero point zero two zero of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code by the inclusion of window replacement fees and changes to the city's policy regarding the issuance of temporary certificates of occupancy. Uh, any further discussion? Joe, would you please take a voice vote?
Lady?
Yes.
Wardens?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gottes?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Gamba?
Yes.
Cal?
No.
The motion carries six one.
You're changing up your order to surprise them.
That's, that's kind of the point.
KPR, you're trying to fire him?
It's gonna come up.
Cal?
All right, um, so moving on, uh, agenda item twenty is an economic development strategy, or discussion and presentation on economic development strategies, or professional services for economic development strategies.
Good evening again. Um, I'm here this evening to present, um, a professional services, um, proposal from, um, Development Research Partners. Um, they're the folks, Jesse Silverstein, uh, the economist who's working with us on the area-wide plan. And, um, I think when we talked, uh, in, uh, at the end of last year, um, we had identified, um, a number of, sorry, doesn't seem to be advancing. Uh, a number of, um, economic development strategy areas that we'd like to focus on. Um, the, uh, the hope then was that some of the information that we were getting, um, from the area-wide, um, could be, uh, repurposed for, to, to inform an economic development strategy. That would be an update of what we have, um, from, uh, the two thousand and four and two thousand and eleven, um, comprehensive plans. And, uh, and there will be a, a, a bunch of data that will fold into this, um, looking at, um, and talking with Jesse. There's, uh, additional, uh, information that we'd like to, to see, uh, some additional data that we'd like to have crunched to fold into this, um, strategy, um, and also, uh, to kind of, um, flush out some of the, the policy statements around these six, um, strategy goals. And, uh, just to kind of, um, go over quickly, um, we, the, the, the different, um, goals are regional trade center, center, maintaining Glenwood Springs as a major retail trade center, um, regional service center, um, supporting the continued growth of Glenwood Springs as a regional service center, tourism development, uh, downtown development, um, community development enhancement policy, um, complementing the, the, uh, and balancing economic development activities with, um, attention, uh, to improving and expanding, uh, community facilities and infrastructure. We've talked a lot, a lot about that this evening. Um, job growth creation, so attracting new companies and industries to, to Glenwood Springs. Um, so just quickly, uh, kind of go through... So just quickly, I'll kind of go through. These are kind of the short-term goals that we had already identified. And so we wouldn't be losing sight of the, these as part of this proposal. But, that, you know, continuing to support these goals in terms of supporting reinvestment and using TIF dollars helping our businesses and entrepreneurs, giving support to that. And then all of the, the community development enhancement, tourism development projects that we're looking at. Again, a lot of those things that, that Brian and others have been presenting to you. So just going to flip through those sites quickly. Also including the broadband expansion, so we can go in and talk about any of those items. So the proposal that we have from Jesse is for twenty-nine thousand dollars with, and additional reasonable travel expenses that would be taken from the general government, non-departmental expenses. So kind of folding back to what we just talked about in terms of the, looking at how we're spending down those dollars. There was an amount budgeted in that line for two hundred thousand dollars for twenty eighteen, of which I believe we've only spent five thousand dollars so far. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have about this proposal.
I've got a quick question for Deborah. I don't ever remember, oh, is it what you said?
I was just going to say, Rick had his answer.
No, no, but I'm going to defer here. Okay, so age will prefer to beauty here, so if you go ahead, Tom.
Mine was a real general question. I just don't ever remember seeing the general government, non-departmental expenses distribution area appropriation mine. Where does that come from? Is that your budget?
It's a non-departmental, which is right after my budget. Yes, it's also my budget.
I didn't, don't remember seeing that one.
It used to be much higher.
All right, sorry, Rick?
So Jim, would the, some result of this work that Jesse's going to do be the economic development plan for the city of Glenwood Springs? This is economic strategy, but we're thinking this would be our plan.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, and I know I sound like a broken spring sometimes here, but I'm just wondering if we could get him to focus a little bit on job growth. You know, I know that he's got some things baked in here with his strategy that he wants to do, like tax incentives for businesses that employ local people. But it would be nice to see sort of a strategy where he's reaching out a little bit further and maybe doing some projections of labor markets and saying that these are some strategies that would work besides tax rebates. It could involve some collaboration. But I think if we're talking economic development, if we don't talk about jobs as a separate category, that somehow we're falling, you know, short of really what's going to drive, I think Glenwood Springs in five years and ten years and down the road. And that is sort of how do we develop a labor pool? How do we develop a talent pool? And I guess as I look at this, and again, you've talked to him, I haven't, this is an agenda item. You know, that might be right on his radar screen. That might be on your radar screen too.
So there is a piece of this proposal that addresses that. The area where we have focused, the least in terms of the area-wide data mining and that effort is probably in that job growth. So if you, if you flip to the proposal, task two that, that is described, there is strategic recommendations for economic development in focus area six, which is that job growth and development area. So this is, you know, he had all of the rest of those kind of lumped together. This is separate because we have not done as much work already as part of the area-wide plan. And it wasn't part of the original goals that were identified in the comprehensive plan as it related specifically to economic development. So this, this does take that into account.
So when he brings us back, we'll be pretty much done with this? Or, you know, is there going to be some, in your mind's eye, some future scaffolding here that would occur?
I think he's going to give us some opportunities and strategies on how to, to move the needle in this particular category and, and what that looks like and what industries will work here. You know, and kind of targets for how to make that, to grow this, to grow our job market.
The last thing I'd say is I just don't want to maybe see us nibble around the edges here without really hitting the core issue. Thank you for your work.
Any further questions for Jim, Shelley?
I have one, and maybe this doesn't apply exactly to this proposal because when I read the proposal, I think it, it sounds appropriate and going along with the area-wide plan. But in your background information, are these working?
I think if you get really, really close.
I had it pushed away. In the background information though, you talk about working on the regional trade center, regional service center and that concept and some of the information that Jesse Silverstein gave us on that in his preliminary analysis and the work that he presented last time the contractors were here for that, the consultants. And then we have this downtown development piece. And I understand, I guess, my question to you is, in the area-wide plan, it makes sense that we're focusing on the downtown development. But when I read that, I was thinking, you know, really, if we're going to be looking at economic development in the city, you know, we have the downtown piece, but we also have some other economic hubs within the city. We have Growing Park Marketplace, we have Meadows, the mall, which, and all those areas need attention too, and particularly the mall. And, you know, and then there's the, kind of the city market area. So do we have it in our economic development strategy to kind of address the economic health of those hubs? And will he be looking at all and what types of businesses are appropriate there? You know, as opposed to what goes in the downtown core? How do we keep those other, those other economic hubs healthy too?
So I think part of the reason that we need kind of a next phase of his work is because he has been focused so much on downtown. And, and, you know, that's the charge of the area-wide. So this will be taking some of that data that has been gathered widely for that. And he's pulled out this piece that's, you know, for the area-wide plan. This is kind of taking a look at, at some of those other categories, the other data. I would say that both Regional Trade Center and Regional Service Center, I think anticipates that we would be looking toward other places in town where we would have that. And so that would be the West Glenwood Mall and the Meadows and the Growing Park Marketplace. And in terms of Regional Service Center, I think specifically, when we were talking about this before, we were talking about financial centers and healthcare. And so I would think that this would also look at the hospital as well.
So that's a bigger picture that will kind of come later.
Yes, so that's part of this and kind of that next step.
Okay, thanks.
Jim has been working on that bigger picture. Our team really has anyway, as well.
Right, and that's great. I was just trying to get how it fits in with this one, so thanks.
I've got one question that's way down in the weeds. And in the interest of tourism development, you know, we had a fairly contentious meeting, last meeting, related to the correct number of short-term rental units, particularly within ADUs. And the right answer is probably somewhere between zero and ten thousand. And my question is, would it be completely inappropriate to ask him to try to come up with some analysis of, of how that affects our tourism? In other words, you know, and if we were to completely eliminate it, what might that do for our tourism market? Or conversely, if we were to go from the, whatever we had, eighty units or whatever, up to five hundred units, what might that do, both tourism and economically? Is that something that would just be completely out of the scope of his effort here?
We can certainly ask him. I know he has been looking both at lodging and housing, both as kind of a larger picture in terms of kind of crunching the numbers as it relates to the area-wide plan. So without asking him specifically that question, I know he did talk a little bit about how the short-term rentals are kind of filling a market, a niche market in terms of lodging that we don't necessarily have that in the hotel motel stock that we have. So it's a question we can certainly ask him.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close it, bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. Move that we approve the, is it ordinance? No. No. That we approve the contract or proposal from, sorry, the Development Research Partners to prepare an economic development strategy, building on the data being gathered and developed for Glenwood, moving forward together for the area-wide plan. It's a contract for professional services in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars.
All right, we have a motion by Shelley. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Shelley and a second by Jim to approve the contract to, I just lost it here, Development Research Partners in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars to provide consulting services related to the preparation of an economic development plan. Any further discussion?
Just real quick on that, just so Jim's clear what we've done. It does say twenty-nine thousand dollars plus reasonable travel expenses. I don't know what reasonable, reasonable travel expenses are, but I think we do need to state that or twenty-nine thousand is the number. Is that, I don't know if that's correct or not.
I, I think I would say plus reasonable travel expenses.
I'll amend my motion to include plus reasonable travel.
Jim, do you accept that amendment to the motion?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Sorry about that, I didn't mean.
Good point.
No, thank you.
Not my detail thing. It's okay, I think we're all tired.
Exactly.
Appreciate the help.
All right, we, so we have a motion by Shelley and a second by Jim to approve a contract in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars plus reasonable travel expenses for this, these services. Any further discussion?
The only, the only thing I would say is the, I'm very interested in this. I'm glad we're doing it. In my view, this is the easy part. And once we get this, I think if we're really going to follow some of this advice, it's going to be a lot of time and effort that we as council and staff is going to have to put in to implement these suggestions.
I agree, at least, or finally to this point. I mean, we've been moving along for the last year and a half in the direction of economic development, which is, which is a good thing. But five, six years ago, there was a dirty word here in the state of Orange, so I'm glad we're here, so. All right, any further discussion? Jill, would you please take a voice vote?
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ingramham?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Gottes?
Yes.
Lady?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gamba?
Yes.
The motion passes.
How does your list change?
She does that intentionally.
No, it's, it's the way they always do it, when there's a few voice votes.
It's always random. So that you can't, it's not the same person who gets to always have the last vote or the first vote. So you can't, you can't gig the system, you know, and go, well, I'll vote against it because everybody voted for it, for political whatever.
Because when we're all voting at the same time, you don't necessarily know what someone else is doing, right? Okay, so moving on, we are now up to the annual appointments to boards and commissions. This ought to go quickly. There's only forty-seven boards and we got seventy people to vote for.
This is my favorite time of the year because I get to watch the city manager like
start tallying.
And just like, we all know I can't do math.
Do we have ballots? Why don't we, how about we give due one at a time? It'll probably be more orderly. That way no one turns in the wrong ballot. We don't get a hanging child, so. You, you pick. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Oh, and this was an issue where, Carl, go, there he is.
All right, I'm just, I'm getting coffee.
That's all right. If you, if you find any ibuprofen over there, I could take three or four of those, so. The first one that Jill handed us is the Building Board of Appeals. Unknown at the time that, or not recognized at the time that we interviewed both of these gentlemen for this board. The current ordinance calls for both of them to be city residents. One of them is not. He lives in eight one six one area code, but it's in Anicorpe, Garfield County. This board, to my knowledge, has not met in six years. That doesn't mean that we can't ignore our ordinance. But, so for benefit of my fellow council members, it's my understanding that Tom Scott is in fact a resident of Glenwood Springs and is in fact the only person we can vote for right now on this ballot.
So I'm guessing you're moving to approve him by acclamation.
I am, and I'm also asking that we amend the ordinance on this board to allow for someone within the eight one six one area code.
The only thing I would say about that is this specific board handles appeals of your building code, which only applies within the city limits.
I see, okay.
So as to some of the other boards where we kind of have impact outside the jurisdiction, this one actually doesn't, so I might argue against doing work.
Okay. All right, then on that basis, because that other applicant was a very qualified applicant. And I would then ask Jill,
To annex?
Catherine tomorrow to, yeah, we'll ask, yeah, we want to annex this guy's house? No, we, we will be one person short on this board because we need, we do need two appointees for this board, so we will have to re-advertise this particular position. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Tom Scott to the Building Board of Appeals by acclamation.
She'll move.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Shelley to award Tom Scott to the Building Board of Appeals by acclamation. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, one down.
If you make them all that easy, that would be great.
So we have our Historic Preservation Commission next. So we are voting for one regular member and one alternate. I would suggest hexing the regular member and put an A by your choice for alternate.
I would say maybe vote for two and then whoever has the highest.
Just out of curiosity, what if we had two that got, just hypothetically, the exact same number of votes? What if we got two that got exactly the same number of votes?
Then he would vote again on another ballot.
Okay.
Can you give me their last names?
Last names?
I don't have any of their last names.
Ackerman. Carston. Cipperly, C-I-P-P-E-R-L-Y. Porter. Stark.
Thank you.
Jill's got her handy name tallied.
We have separate sheets for the questions.
Did I have them somewhere? I was improvising.
Yes.
Should we pass them down?
No.
Coming this way?
Yeah, passing them down.
Mike, do you, do you wanna share what Jill's saying?
I, I forgot, um, for the benefit of our viewing public, um, uh, coun- councilman, I almost called you congressman. Sorry, that was an insult.
Just like, everybody got it with that one.
I'm, I'm pretty good at that, you know? Um, Councilman Ingraham was not a, on the council when we interviewed the first forty or fifty applicants to these boards, not joking in terms of the numbers, and was present for the last twenty or so. Um, and, uh, for that reason, he is going to abstain from voting on, um, these appointments, so.
So I can look forward to lots of three threes.
Exactly. And then we go into the cage match, you know?
Right, exactly, we'll just put you in the well.
Ready. First ballot, Carsten and Stark. Carsten and Stark. The two, the two pri- those two ballots, Carsten was the primary and Stark was the alternate. On both of those. The third one, uh, Carsten, primary, Stark as the alternate. Two votes, uh, one vote for Mary Ann Ackerman, one vote for Carsten, no designation. One vote for Ackerman, one vote for Carsten, no designation. One vote for Carsten and one vote for Stark, no designation.
We got a total of six votes for Carsten and four for Stark. I'm thinking.
Two for Ackerman.
Two for Ackerman, that Carsten would be the.
Carsten's the full-time.
Yeah.
And Stark would be the.
So, we need to make a motion to that effect? All right, I would entertain a motion to appoint Ron Carsten as the voting member and Patsy Stark as the alternate board member for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Jonathan and a second by Rick to appoint Ron Carsten as a voting member and Patsy Stark as the alternate member of the Historic Preservation Commission, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Financial advisors?
Financial Advisory Board.
How many seats do we have open?
And just while we're doing this, I would also just remind city attorney.
Excuse me?
I would just, while we're doing, while we're voting for this ballot, I would remind the city attorney that we're going to want to start putting together some ordinances to.
I, we are working on that right now.
All right.
Can we not be the alternate main person? It will be very confusing with this many, can we just do the most votes and do it that?
Yeah.
Well, I think in this case, we're just voting for five anyway, five voting board members.
Yeah, well, you have two regular members.
Oh, two regular and, got it, okay.
So, just.
Well, if everybody votes for everybody, then you're not gonna get the alternates, you're not gonna get the designated, so we don't need to designate.
How about?
Well, actually, here's what, since you have, you're voting on two regular members, um, vote for your regular members first.
Got it.
Vote for two. We'll see how that shakes out, and then we'll go from there.
Can we just circle the names of the people who voted?
Oh, sorry, um, Ed- Edmonds? Do you have the, do you have the names?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right.
So we only have two regular members?
So we're just gonna vote for two regular members on this first ballot, yes.
Did you already fill it out?
How do you fill it out?
He's got that look.
Oh, you gotta hang, Chad.
No, I just circled the two people, I wanted the regular.
Okay, okay.
That feels easy.
All right, so hand them in.
Did you do it wrong?
Careful.
No, no.
Never.
We were, we were not wanting to vote alternates on this one.
Nah, just.
Do we have to vote twice for everybody now?
Yes.
Yes.
Seems like I need to circle the name.
Fine, on one ballot, there's a bunch of As, so please ignore the As for this ballot.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
Kushto and Sullivan. Sullivan and Traeger. Kushto and Sullivan. Sullivan and Traeger. Edmonds and Sullivan. Sullivan, Traeger.
Okay, we have six for Sullivan and three for Traeger, two for Kushto and one for Emmet- Edmonds, so Sullivan and Traeger.
So, now, we, 'cause we've got a general rule that we don't appoint anyone who doesn't receive the majority of the vote. So now we have to cast another ballot for the, the second regular, so take Sullivan off, vote for one. So now we're just voting for one, and this is our second voting member.
It is Jim's fault.
So, uh.
You vote for one person?
Yes.
Yes. Did you do it wrong again?
No, I didn't do it wrong.
I feel like you're needlessly complicating this, it's true with us, 'cause it's slightly early tonight.
Uh, no, trust me, if you're on this side trying to figure out the alternate regular thing, it's just easier to do straight ballots.
Okay.
What, and so now we're just.
We're voting for, we're voting for the second voting member.
I may ask you to suspend your rules on the alternates, Mike, 'cause you're never gonna get a, I mean, you're gonna do fourteen ballots to get there.
Okay.
Can we just open an accusation on the alternates?
Well, if you have a slate, you wanna, after this, if you have a slate, you wanna propose.
Let, let's do one at a time, let's do this.
I love that list.
Let's see, see where I'm at here.
Traeger. 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 Edmonds.
Okay, I can't really tell who won, that would be Traeger.
Bueller, Bueller. All right.
We're gonna have a lot of fun with that.
Um, so now, vote for three for our alternate positions.
You've got four potential candidates, vote for three of them.
And do not vote for Dan Sullivan or Kathy Traeger.
Correct.
Then you gotta move to South Florida and.
Do I have to guess what they are?
And I only have up to five ballots, so you, you have to get it done, and you only have three more times.
But they, they will get it done this time, 'cause I'll have the mayor suspend the rules and we'll figure it out, whatever they are.
Are we voting for three?
You're three.
Yeah, it's three.
Edmonds. Franta, Kushto. Edmonds, Franta, Kushto. Edmonds, Franta, Kushto. Edmonds, Franta, Kushto. Edmonds, Franta, Kushto. Franta, Kushto, Winhols.
Okay, um, the Edmonds, Franta, Kushto.
All right. Next.
All right, you guys making a motion on that, Mike?
Oh, yes, uh, so I would entertain a motion, we'll get back to that page, I would entertain a motion to appoint Dan Sullivan and Catherine Traeger as the voting members of the Financial Advisory Board, and Ted Edmonds and Ed Franta and Eric Kushto as the alternate members of the Financial Advisory Board.
Just a second.
I, 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 I need someone to make a first motion on this.
Oh, I thought you did, oh.
No, I said I need a motion. All right.
I'm making the motion.
All right, so Jonathan, and you're, you're seconding it, Shelley? Okay, so we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Shelley. To appoint Dan Sullivan and Catherine Traeger as voting members, and Ted Edmonds and Ed Franta and Eric Kushto as, um, alternate board members of the Financial Advisory Board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Veil board.
You have some great boards.
So is this the veil board or the historic board?
You got historic?
Yes, I got historic, yes, we'll give that back to Jill.
Do you have a veil one?
I don't have a veil one.
So Rick needs a veil board, what, this is historic preservation.
You gotta stick together, yeah. Yeah.
Can he just use a couple of mine and change the name?
All right, so on the veil board, we are voting for three voting members, is that correct? Or two voting members and an alternate? What are we doing?
Vote for three, it says to vote for three.
Right, but the last one said vote for five, and they weren't all voting members.
Yeah, I think it was two in one, wasn't it?
That's what I thought. We have two voting members and, oh, they're all voting members, but one of the voting members is going to be on a term that will expire early in twenty-twenty.
Okay, well, I just took Kathy's. Yeah, made one of them.
All right, um, so, we have two full-term appointments and one partial-term appointment. How do we wanna do this? Vote for the first two?
That makes sense.
Okay, so the.
You get there for, for the shorter one?
The first two, so we're just voting for two right now.
And those are the long-term?
These are for the long-term, yes. Yeah, while we're waiting for this to happen, I do wanna acknowledge all, everyone who applied, um, we had many qualified candidates for all of these boards and commissions, and we appreciate all of the interest, and, uh, please continue to be involved in the future. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Cassabon. Frederick. Frederick Larida. Frederick Larida. Cassabon Frederick. Frederick Larida. Frederick Larida.
Okay, Frederick got most votes, then Larida.
Okay.
Frederick got six votes, Larida got four, they were the highest.
Okay, so then, we need to vote one more time for the short term.
One only, right?
What's that?
One only.
One only, and do not vote for Frederick or Larida.
Okay. What do we, uh, just cross out Shelley or Forge Mundy? I would just like to acknowledge everybody that stayed in the office for this event. Thank you. We're interested.
Democracy doesn't start this.
Okay.
Waller. Cassabon. Cassabon. Waller. Cassabon. Cassabon.
Cassabon got four votes.
All right, um, so I would entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Alicia Frederick and Avis Larida to full-term, as full-term voting members on the veil board, and Rachel Cassabon as a, the shorter-term voting member.
Still moved.
So, we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Rick to do what I said earlier. 'Cause I'm tired, and I need some drugs, I mean, not bad drugs, just. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, okay. Anything like that would be excellent. Do you have a leave? I would, I would take three.
Although I actually not believe in my first approval.
Oh, do you? I looked in my bag and I thought I did, but I have allergy medicine, that isn't gonna really help me too much.
Yeah, and I, I feel bad, 'cause I just, I just, I normally have a thing in my truck, and I just use them all.
Okay.
We do have painkillers in the first eight bucks.
All right.
True, great show.
Great. Yeah, I'll do it, thank you. We are in the River Commission. Are these like, extra strength or?
No, it's for, you take one for eight hours, and you need four more.
Thank you. Thank you, Shelley.
So, there's no alternates here?
Uh, what is our, I gotta find my River Commission. We have three voting members on the River Commission, is that correct? Okay, so vote for three.
But it looks like you're limited to one from eight-one-six-oh-one.
Oh, I see.
So should we do?
No, we don't have to vote for it, maybe so.
So, do not vote for more than one that is from the eight-one-six-oh-one area code as opposed to being a resident.
So we should vote for three?
We should vote for three totals.
Now they vote, okay.
Any three, regardless if it's eight-one-six-oh-one?
No, you can't, you can't vote for more than one from eight-one-six-oh-one. No, you don't have to vote for any of them.
We will trust you.
They're dropping like flies.
Hey, was this gonna see, oh, oh, I've heard about, shouldn't you be here?
He's around somewhere, he's staying for executive session. Yeah, oh, yeah.
What are we talking about?
I think it's great over there.
Many things. What, executive session? So we could fit in your appropriate number of work sessions.
Uh, it's your fault.
Because, because someone can't start at eight-thirty?
No, because you want to be limited to like, uh, six minutes.
Yes, I mean.
Gibson. Langenhusen.
Oh, my goodness.
Schreiber. Gibson, Langenhusen, Schreiber. Gibson, Langenhusen, Schreiber. Peliki, Louis Newberry. Gibson, Langenhusen, Schreiber. Gibson, Louis, Schreiber.
Okay, we got five for Gibson, five for Schreiber, and four for Langenhusen. They are all three residents, so they're all acceptable.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Erica Gibson, Brendan Langenhutzen, and Scott Schreiber to the River Commission.
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Shelley and a second by Rick to appoint Erica Gibson, Brendan Langenhutzen, and Scott Schreiber to the River Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And yes, they're all out there somewhere misbehaving and laughing at us.
What's that?
So they're all out somewhere together laughing and misbehaving and laughing at us.
So we have two now.
Or not.
What's that?
Except they're all out there somewhere laughing at us.
Uh, no, they were, they were talking about a coup, I don't know.
Please, please.
We're reading the chocolate box back there.
So you know, according to the city manager and city attorney's clock, we've got twenty minutes before eight o'clock.
Nine o'clock. Four, nine. All right, um, I'm trying to find the damn.
They did the River Commission, well you forgot.
How good.
Three left. Which one are we working on, Jeff?
Parks and Rec, I can't, here we are.
Okay.
Okay, so we're voting just for one, but we also decided in earlier discussion that, uh, there was a strong feeling that we wanted to have an alternate, so can we vote for two and a second?
We, we decide, we, we discussed, right?
Yeah, you discussed.
Oh, we didn't decide, you're right. There was a strong suggestion.
And, but, uh, do we have one provided for by code right now?
Um, there are none. I, I thought that we could appoint alternates regardless. Is that not the case?
Probably not the case, but you can appoint an alternate and we'll just add one to the code.
That would be good. Okay.
So just vote for two and?
Yeah, vote for two and if we will get one and two.
Yeah, vote for two and, right. All right, just, just vote for two, just like that. So you might need to move yourself forward, Jonathan.
Someone just said vote for one and two. I'm trying to keep up with myself.
Because that's where, you know, people couldn't figure out how to vote without getting all in each other.
Fosnot. Peterson. Peterson, Fosnot.
Ranger Johnson was junior high when that was going on, right?
Fosnot, Peterson. Fosnot, Peterson. Fosnot, Peterson. Cochran, Peterson. Okay, you did it. Um, Peterson has six votes, Fosnot has five.
Okay.
Uh, motion?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so we need a motion to appoint Dana Peterson as a voting member and James Fosnot as the, um, alternate member to the Parks and Rec Commission if such an alternate member is not allowed by code to re, amend the code as.
Got it. Got it.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Jonathan to do what I said earlier.
Second.
Second by Shelley, uh, to appoint Dana Peterson as a voting member and James Fosnot as the alternate member of the Parks and Rec Commission. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Transportation Commission. Who's voting for five? I don't believe so.
Well, I'm voting something for.
Here, yeah, which one did you give him? Three.
Yep.
You got one, so, yeah.
Guys have never been more motivated to work together, have you?
No.
Wouldn't have stood out.
Did you do it wrong again, Jonathan?
Well.
All right, are, are we ready?
There is one that has a shorter term?
There is.
I'm thinking, a vacant seat with a, one of which is a vacant seat, the term that expires in twenty nineteen.
Oh.
All right, well.
Well, then that's whoever gets the fewest number of votes gets that seat.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ready? Ready. Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, Wilman. Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, Wilman. Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, Wilman. Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, Wilcom.
Wilcom, no, Wilman.
Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, Wilman. Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, Wilman. Okay. I got totally confused between the two of those.
No, you're good, seems like one way or the other.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so that actually worked. We have six for Barker, Gavrell, Poirier, Stevens, and then five for Wilman.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Lee Barker, Rob, Robert Gavrell, Roger Poirier, John Stevens to full terms on the Transportation Commission and Charles Wilman to a term to expire in twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Shelley to appoint the slate of people I indicated earlier. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's a good send off, Jill, you'll be like, I'm done. I do not have to do this again. That's right.
Okay. This one has some interesting instructions. We have to vote for one from the lodging
Yeah, we're common, so we-
community. There is only one from the lodging community.
So that's done.
So, um, so on that basis, I would actually entertain a motion to appoint Jeremy Gilley, Gilly as the member from the lodging community.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Jeremy Gilly, uh, as the mem, member to the Tourism Promotion Board representing the lodging community. A motion by, I'm sorry, two made, that, Rick and a second by Todd. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, we need to appoint one member from the chamber. There are two candidates from the chamber, Trent Blizzard and Gina Sheldrake. So please vote for one of those two. And then the remaining candidates, we need to vote for one. We can vote for Stephanie Keister, Suzanne Stewart, or Patrick Drake. Was there not also, there was also discussion about appointing an alternate among those members?
Yeah.
So.
Among those three? Yeah, so vote for one in each category of chamber and resident. And then we'll go from there.
Okay, so right now just vote for one in the, from the chamber candidates and one from the resident candidates, so.
Well, he's real funny, I have to. He's, Steve's like just substituting about like, no.
Use this one.
We decided that earlier, I'm sorry, I can't.
If I can't figure it out, Jill can.
Ready? I'm ready.
That's a short time, too.
Blizzard. Drake. Okay. Blizzard, Drake. Blizzard, Keister. Blizzard, Stewart. Blizzard, Stewart. Blizzard, Drake. Okay, Blizzard got six votes, Drake got three, Stewart got two, and Keister got one.
I would propose that you just appoint in that order.
That works for me.
Yep.
What was that for?
So, uh, uh, Blizzard got six votes, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so he's the chamber.
Okay, um, so that would be the chamber board member, then, uh, Drake got three.
Yes.
Stewart got two and Keister got one.
Right, so.
So I would entertain a motion to appoint Trent Blizzard and Patrick Drake as voting members of the Tourism Promotion Board and Suzanne Stewart as an alternate member.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Trent Blizzard and Patrick Drake as voting members of the Tourism Promotion Board and Suzanne Stewart as an alternate member, and the same rule applies, if we can't appoint an alternate, then we want to amend the, the code to do that. All right, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, are we done?
Yay, all right.
With that part.
I just have one thing. Uh, we have a DOLA grant coming up on April second. There will not be a meeting between now and then. I did not have time to pull out out of our DOLA rep what would be the most competitive of South Midland. I do think we should go after that grant source for South Midland. I'm asking for permission to, for Mike to sign that resolution once I figure out how it should be wording.
And it, it's, uh, granted an amount of up to a million dollars.
You good?
Okay.
I'll move that we allow Mike to determine, to be determined for, uh, DOLA grant for up to a million dollars for some aspect of South Midland.
Good enough.
Second.
I have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Todd to, um, authorize myself to sign a grant application for a DOLA grant, um, on, related to the South Midland construction project. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I got.
All right, I, um, I feel kinda compelled to address, um, the conflicts issues that have been circulating uh, via email and some comments that were made tonight, and I think there is some confusion sometimes in the current climate to confuse conflict with dissension. Right, so people are getting called out for conflicts by people who don't agree with their position irrespective of the factual basis of that. So just for, I'm gonna do a little visual aid. Everybody who owns an ADU on city council, raise your hand.
I'm not sure what mine's called.
Okay, so. All right, um, so for purposes of an ADU discussion, there are four of you who own ADUs, right? I just wanna make sure that we're clear about that, that we'll-
I own two.
You own two?
Yes.
So he's double A. The, the point in that is, is that when we have these conversations, I think the public sometimes uh, identifies people that they agree with or don't agree with, and then this idea of conflicts is raised. The reality is factually, four of you own ADUs. So, from a reality standpoint, we either have to disclose that, you don't. Steve doesn't, Mike doesn't. Rick does.
Actually, I have a duplex, but that's up to the stretch.
Right, I was gonna say, yours may or may not. So three or four of you, so the point being is that sometimes in a small community, um, or in any community, there are times when we face issues that if either everybody's off or everybody's on. Right, so I just, I wanna be really clear for the public to not, just because you disagree with a position, to immediately assume that that is a conflict of interest. It's a difference in position. It's not factually a difference. The other question I was gonna ask is how many people own rental units in town? All right, so when we were talking about multifamilies or rental units and certain things, it affects three or four of you again. So pragmatically from my position, when we talk about these things, I'm gonna ask you to disclose, but if we pull everybody off the council who has a potential conflict, we have no ability to move forward on public policy. So it is, there's a pragmatic piece to this that we have to recognize and address and deal with. So there again, I wanna be really clear that I'm gonna be asking you as we move through a series of issues probably over the next year to disclose things, and then we're gonna have to have a conversation about what that means. And there's some obvious ones when there is a direct conflict, it is your project that is up in front for review. But again, I'm gonna be really stringent on the idea that there's actual conflicts and then there's differences of opinion as to position. And those two things legally are very, very different. And like I said, I, this is really for the viewing public as well as you guys. Uh, and I gave John Strad a heads up that I would be having this, he's at home, working on something else, but I just wanted him to watch the end of the meeting to look at this, cause it's, I know it's been a topic of discussion in the community. So with that, I'll be quiet. Normally I don't say anything, but I just really felt compelled to address that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yes. I think, uh, some of those accusations were uncalled for and unfounded and.
And I think part of it is just a misunderstanding of what a conflict of interest means.
Well, and I think there's, you know, you can say that it's uncalled for, but I think when there's a perception out there in the community, maybe we do just, as you just stated, there needs to be complete transparency.
Right, and that's why, um, you know, because you just, you, you kind of know what you know, but you don't know everything, and so there are gonna be times when I'm just gonna ask everybody, you know, like, every, you know, everybody owns a bicycle, raise their hand. We're gonna be talking about bicycles, right, like.
So, just, can I pick on you for a sec, that?
Yeah.
If, with all due respect?
No, good.
So, and I'm just trying to get clarification here. If, since Todd's company manages vacation rentals, is that a higher conflict versus, cause that's an actual business purpose versus, well, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not thinking, I'm not trying to, uh.
Now, and I mean, we have, I mean, yes, maybe, but we'd have to talk about it. I, I'm not gonna, I don't have all the facts on how that flows through to Todd or not to Todd and where that money goes. Um, you know, he's also a realtor, um, Steve Davis is a builder, you're a developer. Um, should the development code not apply, should you not be allowed to vote because it could affect your business? Um, or Todd's, or, see what I'm saying, like, there's, there's these places where you really have to kind of dig in and really think your way through. Um, and, and for me, asking underlying question, why am I raising the issue or not? Um, and there's also going to be a point where I just am not gonna have a council to work with if everybody has to recuse themselves on, on every issue, and it, and it's a, it's a fine balancing act, but I just wanna be careful about it. And intent has nothing to do with conflicts. That's the other thing that I think's really important to talk about, is that it is a factual conflict. It is not a, well, I don't intend to do that, so it's not a conflict for me, but you might intend to do that. If you guys are all in the same category, I'm gonna ask you to be treated the same, or, and I'm going to treat the issue the same if you're factually in the same category, because I don't, intent has nothing to do with an actual conflict of interest, right? The perception of a conflict of interest is, I think, part of the other thing that's kind of going on in the community is, if, and all of you at one point or another have proposed legislation, that's your job. And it may be because you have an interest in it or a member of the community has an interest in it, or things like that, and so proposing legislation doesn't automatically make, mean it's a conflict of interest, it means you're doing your job, so.
So would a higher bar be, and, you know, I don't know if it's necessary, but would the, um, sort of recusal come if you were to say, I stand to financially benefit? And, you know, it doesn't matter what I own, you know. And, you know, it doesn't matter what I own, you know, uh, but just that simple.
Right, and that's, and that's really what it is, and that's why I had everybody raise their hand that had an ADU, because while you don't have the current intent to financially benefit, you will. If a change in regulation might be of benefit to your property, you may not have the intent to take advantage of it, but you would stand to potentially financially benefit. So that's where, like, I mean, we just have to be reasonable about this and, and recognize that when you're dealing with each other, don't go there first to try to, like, I mean, it, it started to feel a little bit in the public setting like we were trying to maneuver to get an advantage on votes from the public setting, and, and that doesn't make any sense to me, I mean, we've gotta, you know, we're gonna have a lot of issues, a lot of important issues coming up this year. We're gonna need to engage everybody fully, and I'd really encourage you to focus on the actual conflict versus a position conflict, right? Cause sometimes, I was gonna say, I mean, from one end of the spectrum to the other, we have, we have people on this council, all of which, for example, own ADUs, all of which could benefit from a change or be hurt by a change in regulation. You know, that, that applies across the board, and it doesn't change because you have an intent to do one thing or a different thing.
So will you, so, um, so will you ask those transparency questions?
Yeah.
Like, if we get questions from the community members?
Right.
You know, oh, so, and so and so has conflict.
Yeah, I mean, I think if I see those, I think I'm gonna run.
Do they bring it to you?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna run, and, and I, that's what I would ask, and I will just run through it, if it's something that has been rattling around, or I'm, I've heard something about, or one of you guys brings up to me, probably before we start hearing on it now, because it's become this thing, I'm gonna walk down the line and say, do you have any, you know, do you have a financial interest in this, do you have a con- whatever it is to define that before we start that discussion.
Is it a?
Cause I think it's unfair to all of you guys to get beat up in the press or in the letters to the editor over things that people are, are assuming, but they don't know. And I just, that, you know, I mean, I just don't wanna put you guys in that place.
I, I appreciate that, is it, um, appropriate that we ask you to specifically respond to Jennifer Venion's, uh, email? The rea- the reason I ask that is, I didn't respond to it, she complained that we didn't all respond.
No, and I, and I was, and I wanted to have this conversation, and part of it was, I, I didn't have an opportunity to query all of you to run down the list of everybody who, um, had, cause I didn't know that Jim had an ADU, for example. Um, I wasn't sure what the sta- I, I wasn't sure what the status on Todd's was, and I didn't know that Jonathan was twice.
Own three percent of ADU by violation of the city.
There you go.
You own thirty percent of it?
Thirty, just thirty.
Thirty percent.
Cause you're only.
So, so anyway, in that, in that Steve didn't have any, right? Like, I just wanted to make sure that I knew the exact facts, and I will respond, um, tomorrow or on Monday to her email and rundown, here's, here's who has what interest. Um, so that everybody can be straightforward and honest, and like I said, I asked, um, John Strad to watch the end of the meeting as we walk through that, so that he had that information as well, because I know it's been, you know, he's been trying to figure it out. So, there you go. So with that, I'll, I'll stop talking.
Alright, thank you, um, is there anything else, I just put away my agenda. Is there anything else, uh, on the report of the city manager or city attorney?
Nope.
Okay, I don't think there's any incoming or outgoing correspondence I need to address. If everyone is okay with it, I'd like to put the council reports on boards committee and commission meetings on hold until the next meeting, cause we have an executive session to go into. Does anyone have a burning desire to tell us about their, oh, you know what I will discuss? I, I apologize. I have a burning desire to get him appointed to some commissions and reshuffle the commissions, and Shelley has sent me an email with the, the commissions that she would like to be appointed to. Um, I will send out an email like I did a year ago with all of the commissions listed. I'll identify the open seats that Catherine had. Um, I'd like everyone to respond, and then, um, by, or on or before the next meeting, um, I will, um, uh, get, get everyone appointed to those boards and committees, okay? Does that sound like a plan? Alright, and then we can do reports at the next meeting.
Could we put reports, I would have one request, cause we always have the reports at the very end of the meeting and we're all tired and nobody's here, it might be nice to put them earlier.
Then we'll be tired and cranky when we hear a land use application, that'll be good. No, I, that's, that's, I'm not opposed to that idea necessarily, so, alright, um.
We could.
Yeah. So, we have an.